All of our productions at GCTV are sponsored in part by Bay State Health, providing the care you and your family need, when you need it, close to home. Visit them online at baystatehealth.org. Greenfield Savings Bank, visit them at 400 Main Street in Greenfield. Call them at 774-3191, or go online to greenfieldsavings.com. Greenfield Community College, providing access and excellence in higher education in the Pioneer Valley. Visit them at gcc.mass.edu. The Hammond Family, the Hammond Family are longtime supporters of Greenfield Community New Fortune Chinese Restaurant on the Mohawk Trail in Greenfield. Visit them online at newfortunema.com, call them at 772-0838, and check them out on Facebook. Real Cleaning Services, cleaning Hampshire and Franklin County since 1972. We don't cut corners, we clean them. Check them out online at realclean.com, call them at 413-422-1143. Peoples United Bank, located at 45 Federal Street in Greenfield. You can call them at 774-3713, or visit them online at peoples.com. The Solar Store of Greenfield, replacing fossil fuels and nuclear power one home at a time. Visit them at 23 Fisk Ave., call them at 413-772-3122, or visit them online at solarstoreofgreenfield.com. Thank you to our sponsors for supporting all of GCTV's productions.
Today is Wednesday, October 10th, 2018. It is 6:33, and we are at the Greenfield High School cafeteria at 21 Bar Avenue in Greenfield, Massachusetts. This is the regular school committee meeting for the Greenfield Public Schools. We are being recorded and broadcast live by GCTV. If there's anyone else in the audience that is recording, can you please let us know now? Yes. Can you state your name for the record? Inga Bora Kolba? Thank you. So we'll let the record reflect that. Thank you very much. Our secretary is absent this evening. He had the stomach bug, so he called this morning to apologize for not attending. I asked Katie, member Karen, to please start us off with a roll call today.
Susan Hollins?
Here.
Cameron Ward?
Here.
Susan Exstrom?
Present.
Bill Martin?
Yes.
Adrian Union?
Here.
And myself? We are here.
Thank you, and we have a quorum. We'll jump right in today. Has the committee had a chance to review the minutes from 9:12:18? Not seeing any response. But I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes from Wednesday, September 12th, 2018.
So moved.
Moved by member Karen. Is there a second by member Exstrom? Thank you. Any discussion on this? Okay. Would the committee like a couple of minutes? I see people reading quickly. Everyone's good. Okay. We're ready to vote then. All those in favor of approval of the Wednesday, September 12th, 2018 minutes? Say aye.
Aye.
And all those opposed? Anyone opposed? Mayor Martin abstains. All right. Thank you, Mayor Martin. So we have those minutes ready. Thank you. At this time, is there anyone here for public comment? So Doug, you know the rules. Three minutes.
I do, I do.
You can't criticize anybody that works for us, and you have three minutes.
I'm done, then. Doug Sullivan, 38, Forest Avenue. I wanted to talk a little bit about Columbus Day. I noticed that the schools were off for Columbus Day, and I am concerned that he is still being honored, given what we know about his history, the full history of his travels to this hemisphere. He doesn't seem to me to be somebody we should be celebrating. And so, I'm not going to go into that history here, but we've known for a long time, since, well, 1980, it was publicized in a popular book, a more accurate story of what his voyages were about and what he did. And yet, we're still teaching as if he is simply a hero, and I think that's a problem. But even more of a problem to me is when I asked some of the elementary teachers what their textbooks had to say about Columbus, what curriculum had to say about Columbus, basically what I got from the ones I talked with was it's really up to teachers to decide what to teach. There really isn't a curriculum for it, which as a longtime social studies teacher concerns me for a lot of reasons. One is because social studies is important, even though it's been squeezed out for a lot of reasons. Secondly, because a lot of people did not receive a very good social studies education themselves, and so leaving social studies up to their judgment is problematic to me, not because of any one individual, but because in general it isn't necessarily taught as well as it might be. So with the best of intentions, they may be miseducating students. So I'm hoping that there's a way for us to, I know there's no curriculum coordinator at the moment, but that there can be some support for, more support of our teachers to become as informed as they can about our history. When I look around and see what's happening in the country, part of what I notice is that we don't know very much about who we are or how we got here, and that concerns me, and I don't want to repeat that. So I'm hoping we can really up our game in social studies education and professional development for teachers. And let me be real clear, I'm not saying that what's happening in Greenfield is not good social studies. I don't know. I know that when I taught social studies methods classes at college, the students who were coming in who were going to become teachers-
You have about 20 seconds.
-knew little or nothing about US history, except for the sort of patriotic "yes sir", and it's inaccurate. And I think that's a real disservice to our country to not be accurate with them. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Doug. Are there any other members of the public that would like to speak? Okay. Seeing none, we will move on to our reports, and we'll start with our student representatives.
Hi.
Sure. Is there anything I have to say? Or can I just go? Okay. Hello. So, starting off with clubs. The French Club went apple picking for bonding. The Spanish Club had a butter braid fundraiser. The Key Club is holding a school supply drive. The box is located in the lobby for people who need it. NHS also had a butter braid and wreath fundraiser for adoptive family. Triumph Honor Music Society induction ceremony will be for new members on October 29th. And Student Council Spirit Week meeting is happening to decide the lip sync theme and dress-up days. Student Council also helped in the Green River Cleanup and participated in the Walk for Hunger. The senior class is having a dodgeball tournament fundraiser. Environmental Science Club helped at the Green River Cleanup. And the Library Club is creating book covers for their favorite books. Also, there's an open house on October 25th from 6:00 to 7:30. On the same day, their parent teacher conference is from 12:00 to 2:30.
Okay. And I will be saying the clubs, I mean the sports, my bad. So golf, lost against St. Mary's yesterday, but their next match is tomorrow against Ware. Volleyball, won against Franklin Tech yesterday. The score is 3 to 2, and their next game is on Friday against Mohawk. Field hockey, lost against Long Meadow on, I don't know what day, but they did. The score was 4 to 0, and today they had a game against South Hadley. Football, won against East Hampton on Friday. The score is 14 to 36, and their next game is home against Maha this Friday. Boys soccer, lost against Franklin Tech. The score is also 4 to 0, but their next game is against South Hadley tomorrow. Girls soccer was supposed to have a game against Ware yesterday, but it got postponed because Ware could not, was not provided a bus. Their next game is against Smith Academy tomorrow. Boys cross-country, won against Mohawk on Tuesday, and girls also won against Mohawk but lost, and their next meet is next Tuesday. For academics, I had that European History had a large test on Tuesday, and they also had to write Joan of Arc essays that were also due on Tuesday. And the ninth grade English classes finished Rumblefish and Of Mice and Men.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Yes, member Ward.
Yeah. First, I didn't get, I didn't get the names, your names.
I'm Iggy Basilia.
Yeah?
And I'm Morgan Blanchard.
Yes, I know, I know Morgan. You're both growing up way too fast. The dodgeball fundraiser?
Oh, yeah.
What is that for? What is it, what are you raising money for?
For, it's just, it goes towards the general fund for the senior class, so like prom, the class trip. Sometimes the money gets distributed, distributed among all of our members, so that they have a little money towards these things.
Is it too late for the school committee to put a team in?
It's not, we actually haven't even-
No forum.
I'm teasing, we couldn't do that.
Oh, well, that stinks. We'd love to have you.
None of us are in good enough shape. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments for the student reps? Okay. Thank you very much. Always a pleasure. So I have a brief report for you. We have a lot to do today, so I do want to keep things moving along. I'll start with some basic business items, just to kind of fill you all in. Deep in your packet, kind of towards the back, you're going to find a single-page MASC header that says "The Future of Public Education in the Connecticut Valley." Oh, great. Yours is towards the front. That's great. So I just wanted to call attention to this. This is a Division V meeting. This is our division, and this meeting is coming up soon on Saturday, October 27th, and it's open for anyone to attend. So I'm just calling attention to that, so committee members are aware. They want to take advantage of the opportunity to have an MASC workshop.
That's the back. There you go.
Awesome. Also in your packet, you will find a two-page open meeting law trainings, printouts from the website, from the Attorney General's Office. On here, you'll see a couple of in-person trainings that are coming up as well. There is a webinar that will be held next Tuesday, October 16th, from 4:00 to 5:30. If any committee members are interested in an open meeting law training, that is available to us. So that's there for your information. I also wanted to follow up on the request from the school committee to the city clerk's office, asking to receive council minutes, so that we can stay informed. Thank you, Mayor Martin, for helping to initiate a dialogue with the clerk's office on that. I did relay to Kathy, our city clerk, that the request was for, to receive city council minutes. Mayor Martin helped to kind of problem-solve a little bit, because Kathy indicated that it could be quite a long time before we received council minutes. And at the heart of the request, I believe, was that the committee wanted to stay informed about council business as soon as possible. So my understanding is that the city council's office is now going to be putting together a quick, sort of, write-up of important votes that occur at the council meetings, and start posting them to the website. Kathy, I believe, indicated that that would be the fastest way to relay that information about important votes that occur. So we look forward to that. I did also, again, reiterate to her that the request was to receive the council draft minutes, and she also mentioned, as was mentioned at our meeting, that they are quite busy and still catching up on many minutes due to a heavy workload and a bit of staffing change. So, a quick follow-up on that. And then, I did want to bring some printed copies of the packet for the canceled MASC workshop. Unfortunately, they didn't make it today, but I will follow up and get some printed materials for you. I think it's important for us to have those materials in hand, and I know some folks like to have printed materials. So please, the canceled MASC workshop that we were to have-
It's not in your packet.
Yeah, it didn't quite make it. Yeah. But I will follow up on that and let you all know when they're available for pickup from the superintendent's office. And that leads me to my last item, which is really that I feel, you know, this past month has been really tough for our committee members. We've had a lot going on, and really, this entire year has been quite challenging for many people. We've seen some low attendance, we've seen, you know, a need to cancel some meetings. At the same time, we also have come to know each other really well, I think, and we're really building a team. The MASC workshop, you'll see later on, as an actual agenda item, because I'd like us to discuss whether or not we actually want to hold that meeting. We voted to have that meeting in order to reflect on our self-evaluation results, and I also added on a handful of other things that I felt needed to be touched on, or had surfaced in different ways that I felt would really benefit from a bit of a discussion from the group. So we'll have a little time to talk through that a little bit later on this evening. But I just want to encourage everyone to really think through what's going on with themselves and their lives, and the commitment to the school committee, because it's really important for us to be able to just uphold our responsibility to our school committee seats and to all of our constituents. So just want to put that out there. We have a lot of important work to do, and it's really important for us to be as present as possible. So without further ado, I will yield the floor to the superintendent. I did ask her to briefly touch on some of the items that are not reflected in today's agenda, that were supposed to be, in quotation, "supposed to be," on our agenda for October through our school committee calendar. This is many, many, many items. This is another thing that I think the school committee does need to reflect on, what it is that we're asking of our superintendent, the timing, and prioritizing the timing of our meetings. I consistently receive feedback from members about wanting to have shorter meetings, more efficient meetings, and so that's that. Superintendent, all yours.
Good evening. I intend to be brief, because I am looking forward to hearing from our students this evening, and the first thing on our agenda is a presentation from several of our students who went on an amazing trip to Nicaragua, which is far more interesting than anything I can say. Dominican Republic, sorry, this year. Still far more interesting than anything I could possibly say. And I will highlight some of what's in my, in the packet this evening, in addition to what the chair just mentioned. So to begin with, there is the monthly superintendent's report, as always. I would like to take this opportunity to note that this document is designed to help with the year-end evaluation. I do it monthly for you. So at the end of the evaluation period, it's broken down by standards. It should be quite helpful to the committee in assessing progress. I've never had one question about this report. I do it for you every month. If people do not want to see it, I do not want to waste time on it. Next is the events in the GPS K-12 website. We spend a lot of time working on our communications with families. We know from incoming employees, from students, from families, from staff, that the website is the primary means that people go to for information. We post all of our minutes here, we post draft minutes, we post events, and we put a lot of time into making this current, our principals keep it updated on their school pages, and we want to make sure that people see this as a resource. So I've included a snapshot. We keep it seasonal, we keep it fresh, and we hope that you are taking advantage of what's on our website, because it's quite a wealth of resources. Next is some excerpts from our hiring report. We have information about a print campaign, as well as a radio campaign, and a social media campaign, because we do have a few vacancies in positions that the school committee has approved, budgeted positions for. So if you are listening, and you're interested in being an instructional assistant, and you're a caring and responsible person who wants to work with our young people, you might want to work with preschool all the way up through high school. We are still looking for, as they say, "a few good men," or gender non-binary people, or women, or anybody. We are interested in good people that want to work with our students. And we have put a lot of effort into making sure people know that we have great opportunities here in the Greenfield Public Schools, and the staff here are the best to work with, and the kids here are even better than the best. So we hope that if you're interested, you'll contact us. Next is a newsletter that came out about Project Here. We've spoken about it, but this includes a clipping from the Attorney General's Office when they highlighted the work that Greenfield was doing in prevention curriculum, and just how important this is. At the teen health survey results that were released at the Communities That Care Coalition a few weeks ago, last week, at the Olver Center, we saw that risky behaviors among youth are down. Our students are engaging in all kinds of healthy behaviors, like after-school clubs and trips, and athletics, and theater, and music, and they're doing fewer and fewer things that we know from research to be dangerous to them. But the one concern that's on the rise across the country, not just here in Greenfield, is vaping, and that's something that we're working at the middle school level and with our youth to initiate more information, and we really want our students to help educate other students about. It's really not safe, and there's aggressive targeted marketing towards kids to make this look appealing and sound safe, and safer than smoking. It's not. I'm looking at you people. It's not. There's nicotine in it, there's chemicals in it, it's not water vapor, it's not just bubblegum-flavored, okay? So we're doing some focused work around that, and look forward to continuing that, and we really need the young people to lead the charge, because we really feel this is important. So you have a newsletter in your packet. There's several media pieces that are in here, and the top one has to do with our boys' basketball coach. We will have Angelo Thomas, who is, many of you know him, he's a graduate here, he's also a PE teacher at Federal Street, and he will be returning to coach here at the high school. So that is in your packet. We'd also like to thank our former coach, Tim Kaplis, who has been coaching over the last four years, and I think he has done a terrific job in the past, and we really look forward to Angelo coming in and coaching with us in the future. And I think all good things are going to happen in basketball. You have an article on the risky behaviors declining, as I just mentioned. And you also have this guide, this is the Franklin County Guide for Parents. We spend time putting communications into this guide every year, because we are really working with the coalition and area resources to reach out to families. So you have this in your packet. You have the reports from the business office as well, but we'll talk about those under budget. I was asked to speak about Student Handbook, which is still a work in progress, so we do not have for a vote this evening, and a number of other items I will address throughout the agenda this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent. I'm seeing a hand, member Hollins.
Superintendent asked if we wanted to continue this report, because if not, she could save time not doing it. Should we respond to that?
Go ahead.
Every month when I see this, I know you've spent time-
Is your mic on?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm always aware you've spent time working on this. Personally, I would rather, I feel we're getting away from our students. I don't know why I feel that way, but I would rather, if there was a choice, have one report on something important to us that there isn't time for, that has to do with our students, instead of this report, but I'm not unappreciative of this report if we had to judge the time.
Thank you, member Hollins. Superintendent.
I forgot to mention in my report, more importantly than anything in your packet, is I have canceled school visits both of the last two weeks in order to address requests of the school committee, and I would caution the committee that it is my most serious responsibility to be in schools and with our students.
Thank you, Superintendent. Any further questions or comments?
Yes, we received a $20,000 grant for the project here and Positive Action Curriculum. So we, the project here, we actually applied, the school committee voted last year, and we implemented that. It's essentially a free curriculum and a toolkit. This year, we applied for a second round, and we received a $20,000 grant, which includes the curriculum and a coordinator for that program, and it helps us put in place the Positive Action Curriculum, which helps, it's not just about, it's not like the Just Say No kind of campaign that many people think of. This is about instilling healthy behaviors in young people, and that's the curriculum that this is funding.
So what is the cost to the school committee?
Zero.
Zero. Okay. Thank you.
And we did receive the $650-plus thousand drug fee communities grant over five years.
So the project hire, did we hire anyone?
That was posted today, in fact. It's a coordinator for that program. So somebody that might apply would be a middle school health teacher, a high school, it would be the kind of person who's already an employee, who would do some additional work, working with our youth.
And that would be compensated?
Through the grant.
Through the grant, as a stipend?
That's correct.
Looking at the project here, it looks like Lauren is the new school coordinator?
That's throughout the Commonwealth. That's not specific to Greenfield.
Thank you.
So there's a full-time position throughout the Commonwealth to coordinate it, and then here in Greenfield, it would be a stipended position.
Okay. And regarding the superintendent's report on the management and operations, so some of the things I'm always interested in around this time of year is enrollment. Do we have confirmation of enrollment of the, or a copy of the report sent to DESI on October 1st?
You have one, two, three, I think six different pages of enrollment information in your packet.
Thank you. How about, I'd be interested also in the status report of the consolidated report we reviewed last year, last fall.
The coordinated program review?
That's it. Yeah. And the status of that, and how we're meeting our goals, and with the actions taken, as well as the accountability report, the accountability report recently issued by DESI. I've requested an explanation of what those numbers mean, and how we rate, and how we're, why we're classified where we are.
Mayor Martin, that's an agenda item for today.
Thank you. End of my questions for now.
Thank you, Mayor Martin. And I saw member Exstrom.
I actually just wanted to go back to, am I on? I just wanted to go back to the superintendent's report. This is actually really helpful, and I'm on the board with the collaborative as well, and the executive director there does something very similar to this, except it's, it's not as generalized, because his goals have been formed and they're set for the year, and so each time that he prevents us, prevents, presents us with his goals, he has a similar, very similar format to this, and whenever he updates it, he just adds the consecutive things. And I think that probably helps him when the year comes to an end and his annual review is going on. It's very organized, and is kind of one of those goals that I would hope for myself sometime, but it's, you know, and it, I think it really helps him in the end, so he doesn't have to spend an inordinate amount of time trying to pull everything together, even though he's been so busy with everything else. So I think it's really helpful.
Yes, Mayor Martin?
Have we, has the chair assigned people for the conference?
It is an agenda item later on. Thank you. Any other comments or questions at this time? Okay. I will just echo that I do find these superintendent's reports to be quite helpful. It's helpful in seeing how our superintendent utilizes her time, and it is helpful to see how any actions are actually applied to any particular goals or standards that we will be evaluating on. And, let's see. With that, I actually want the committee to consider pausing the agenda for just a moment. I received a notification yesterday evening, a bit of a, almost a request to come and address the school committee regarding a- address the school committee regarding a, what's the right word? Lighting upgrade. Yes.
I would request that our student presentation come first.
Okay. So we have two competing priorities for time right now. One is a quick look at a lighting upgrade and the other is that there is a request, multiple requests have been put forward to have our students and Terry Dodge give us a report on the Global Glimpse. So given that it's 7:00 PM and one of our attendees needs to leave by 7:45, I'd like the committee to entertain first hearing the Terry Dodge report, item, agenda, agenda item number one. And then as agenda item number two, entertaining our new business that we've just received from the sustainability manager. Can I please have a motion to, yes, thank you. So that would be to suspend the agenda as it is now, move to business item one, and insert business item two, new business from the sustainability office. Move by Member Ekstrom and second in by Member Karen. Is there any conversation on this? Yes, Mayor Martin?
What is the time allotted for each?
I believe that the eighth grade history teacher, I'm sorry, the eighth grade Global Glimpse trip presentation will last approximately 15 minutes. Is that accurate?
It is accurate.
Thank you. And then following any Q and A, we'll have time for Ms. Collins to present. Does that make sense?
Could I ask a question?
Yes, Member Hollins.
How long does Administrator Collins need to explain the lighting? If it's just a couple minutes, might be.
I think that I've requested that Ms. Collins prepare five minutes to present and be aware that we may have some Q and A that would last about five to 10 minutes. So I think that 15 minutes in all for that particular topic. And we've now just deliberated for about three minutes on just moving things around. So I would actually like to call the, we have a motion on the table. Any further discussion before we vote?
Just to equalize the discussion, the Q and A for the energy for the schools and the Q and A for the trip are both equal. So if their 15-minute presentation is 15 minutes, and that's a half hour, and if the five-minute information that's going to be delivered by Director Collins, it seems like it's much shorter. So let the committee.
Are you offering an amendment to the motion?
I'm saying I'm not going to support the motion when it's five minutes for the energy director to be here and it's probably a half hour for the report from the students and teacher, then.
Thank you, Mayor Martin.
That's my opinion.
Yes, Superintendent.
I would just like to express that these students have been requested to attend since maybe open house, when I had an opportunity to talk with some of our students about their experience and they've prepared for this evening and it's actually on the agenda. And the other item that the rules of procedure are being suspended for came to us after the agenda was published, and it's no disrespect intended. I think originally it was brought for it as a potential for public comment. So again, no disrespect intended here. I just think we should proceed to allow our students and then I believe there'll be time for both.
Thank you Superintendent Harper. There is a motion on the table.
Just to respond.
Mayor Martin.
I respond to the superintendent. The energy director is here at the request of the superintendent to bring up information on the buildings, and that's fine. Any, any other, I had suggested speaking and public comment to reduce all of the time for the agenda, which would have been possible, but not at this point, obviously. So I'm not going to support this motion purely on the basis that the energy director was invited by me at the request of the superintendent. And she knows she has to be somewhere else at 7:45. So if we can't have an opportune time to, and enough time to discuss some of the work that she's been doing for the past year, then I don't think it's fair to her. Maybe we can reschedule.
Mayor Martin, would you like to offer an amendment?
The amendment is opposite of the motion. I don't think I can do that.
Okay. There is a motion on the table. Any further discussion? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Yes.
Member Hollins, Mayor Martin, thank you. Motion passes. So we will suspend our agenda and move immediately into business item number one. And we will keep in mind our time constraints. So we are all very much looking forward to the presentation. Take it away.
Thank you very much for having us here tonight. We had a wonderful trip in the Dominican and the kids are really excited about talking about it. I would like to tell you who's actually here tonight. So if you kids can come around in back of superintendent.
Stand behind the Dodge for a second.
And as I say your name, can you just raise your hand? And these are the proud students of Greenfield High School. Brayton Major, Dion Casanova, Maddie Katie, Morgan Downham, Morgan Blanchard, Augie Seifert. And then three people who are not here tonight, they weren't able to come, Hunter Campbell, Lecona Ven, and Ben Hernandez.
Would you like us to hold this up there? Well, okay.
You need to hold it so that they can hear you at home. So you can travel with that mic and stand as close up here. That's fine.
Be careful.
It will travel with you.
Okay, so this summer from July 26th to August 10th, we were in Costanza, Dominican Republic with a group called Global Glimpse. They are a nonprofit organization run by a woman named Eliza from Western Mass. And they basically just give young adults, like uprising seniors, opportunities to go travel developing countries and witness poverty in a different strength, I guess. Like you get to see it up and close and you get to experience. And we slept in a hotel that was not nearly as good as the ones in America. And things were just a lot different. And I'm beyond glad that we got to go on a trip like this. This was the night we were leaving, actually. I'm sitting next to Brayton like always. That's all of us. These are program coordinators. This is a lovely woman named Jojo and a lovely man named Felix. And they, they helped a lot to make the trip even better. That, in the top right corner was a Dominican bus, I guess. It's what we traveled to go everywhere, to go everywhere. It's what we got in at the airport to get to Costanza. It's how we got back to the airport, too. This is as soon as we got in the Dominican at an airport. And you can see everyone's reaction was like, what? Because that's when they were asking for our phones. So we were like, no, because they take your phones. This is, this is pretty much the whole entire trip packed into like a couple of fancy words. And we experienced social, emotional, and academic growth. I can, basically by just doing all of this. She has a heavy finger. Slide.
Keep going, keep going, keep going.
Next one, next one, next one. This was, early on the trip, we had to kind of make group rules and norms or agreements, is what we actually called them. And we had to sit in like a seminar circle, we actually did every single night, and come up with the rules together as a whole. And we all had to, as you can see, we all had to sign our names on the sheet.
So while we were there, one of the first days we were there, we signed up for different themed days in pairs to be leaders of the day in Spanish. You can say it.
The leader del dia?
I'm a French student. Yeah. So basically what the leader of the day did, the two of them, was they would write the agenda for the next day and present it that night. They're responsible for remembering the agenda, for assigning jobs. So we had to carry, we couldn't drink the water there, so we had to carry these big jugs of water wherever we went. So we assigned people to carry the water. We had to uphold the dress code because the culture there is very different from here and we wanted to respect that. So we had people monitoring before, what people wore before we left the hotel. The gap police, which is when we cross roads, because they are not afraid to run you over and lights. We had to make sure that we turned off lights before we left the accommodations. And along with these responsibilities, well, we had to make sure these assigned people like carried out their responsibilities. And the leaders of the day, they had to make sure people were drinking water. They had to make sure everybody was all together. They were basically what our program coordinators were for the first few days, helping us get settled. Do you want to take it from here?
Sure. While being a leader, though, we had to demonstrate our three Cs. At Global Glimpse, our three Cs are courage, commitment, and compassion. So yeah, demonstrating that, we had to make sure that we had everything. We had to make sure at meals that anyone with dietary restrictions was to be taken care of, anything like that. We had to make sure everyone got to bed. You set the tone for the day, really. The dishes, yes. We had to assign dishes. Everyone loved doing the dishes. Wake up call. But one of the most important aspects to being leader del dia was the nightly meetings. And we had nightly meetings, nightly, and we discussed, we discussed what we learned, what we experienced with several guest speakers. We, yeah. So here is an agenda of our nightly meetings. We would, we would pass the torch. We had a, kind of like a tradition that you would share a talent, then we'd pass the torch. But one of my favorite parts to our nightly meetings was our roses and thorns. And that was when you as leader of the day could share with the group, well, this is what you guys did great, and this is what I wish you guys would do better for the next leaders, to improve the experience. And they would do the very same for us. So we could take something a little more from just leading the group. I think that was really great.
Do you want me to go first? So one of the, or a couple of the days, we went on a history tour and walked around Costanza and learned on with what goes on. And one thing we thought was really cool is that like over here, is that this was almost like a fence around a baseball field and people would pay to have, it's kind of like an advertisement, where they would pay to have their company painted on the cement part of it. And then they would pay a monthly fee, which would go towards that baseball field. And then we went to the town hall to see what it was and what it looked like. And we went to the fire, one of the fire stations and we got a tour and we got to see some of the old trucks that they use and go down the fire pole. Is there anything you want to say?
Oh, yes. Thank you. Over here, it is. Over here in this general area, we have us learning to make masks by a man named Gato. He was very awesome. He taught us how to make these awesome little masks that in most often their culture represented demons of some form. And they'd be modeled after different animals depending on which region they were from, which is pretty cool. Over here, we're learning how to dance. Yeah. Yeah, I was really bad at it. Basically, a man named Paul Pink, he came, he came over and he taught us how to dance the merengue and the bachata, which are two very important dances in the Dominican culture.
It took a lot of courage.
It did take a lot of courage. Here, we have the amazing mountains that surrounded Costanza. And it was the most beautiful mountains I've ever seen in my life. I'll never forget them. And despite, oh, you want, you want, here you go. You want some? No? Cool. I'll keep going. Despite the poverty, the povertyish town of Costanza, the people that we met there were very sweet, welcoming, and nice to all of us, even though we were ignorant Americans coming into their country. They still like were, they welcomed us with open arms and basically accepted us and treated us very nicely. I will never forget their kindness. Religion is also deeply embedded into their culture, specifically Christianity of different forms. At the top of a mountain, there's a Nino Jesus, which is basically baby Jesus. It's a giant statue that stands at the top of a mountain and has a beautiful view. And also, also they have congregations there? I don't know. I'm looking at you. I don't, I don't remember the word. Basically, they'd have church meetings there and it's pretty awesome. And yeah, yeah, I will hand it off.
So while we had a lot of wonderful experiences at the Dominican, we had some not so wonderful experiences, but we learned most from these experiences. This, this here is a few pictures of the dump here in Costanza region. And I think the dump is where we learned most. We got some insight into the corruption into the Dominican government, especially in the Costanza region. Particularly in the Costanza region, there is something going on. The government was, was renting out land to a private owner for the dump to be held. So to ensure that these homeless people wouldn't be affecting the downtown area and all that. Not very sustainable, so we talked about sustainability, especially in the state. And some more, actually, the government would send groups of people to take what they found at the dump, because everything that they found at the dump was their living. All the metals, all the plastic and the paper, they went and sold. So they would go down and they would take that and they would sell it themselves. Especially looking at the housing, they weren't living much. They were living in tents, maybe in tents. Yeah. This was.
Now they can hear us. Click it twice and then move your hand. Okay, so this was actually like the hardest day of the entire trip for me and I couldn't handle it because we stepped off of the bus. They warned us probably 100 times before we got there, how the smell was going to be the worst smell I've ever encountered and the people were going to be scary looking and there's animals that you need to be careful with and you're not allowed to swat the bugs. But as soon as we got out, there was like a pack of dogs, like just right there, like in reach, and you're not allowed to touch the dogs. And they looked pretty angry. And the smell made me like extremely sick to where I thought I was going to like fall backwards and be stuck in the dump and they were going to leave me or something. So I got back on the van and I actually felt like I actually fell asleep and slept the whole time that they were out there because I couldn't deal with it.
One of the days, though, we, we went to a place called Las Flores, where we, we met an organization. And this organization, the organization's goal was to ensure that kids were off the streets and they were, they were going to school and they were getting an education. So what they did is they said, you can play baseball with us and you can compete and come play the games, but if you don't have the grades, you're not playing the games. Here at this program, they spent a day studying religion, spent a day studying English, and they spent the rest of their days playing baseball or coming to school. And if you didn't come to school, they would make you. It was a really great, really great solution. It was a really great, really great solution for this area, sustainable and just wonderful. Here's some more pictures of us playing some baseball with them. Did she?
So one of the days, we went to a plantation and we helped the people there with the work that they would normally do every day. So some of us went to the cucumbers and they, I went to the tomatoes, so I, we helped, like, twirl the stalks around. It was very tedious, all of the work that we did. And we were working for, like, an hour, an hour and a half, and I was sweating and I was tired, and I was like, these people do this all day and for, every day, and I, I could never do this work. They do this all their lives. So it was really eye-opening.
Okay, so I think four or five times, we went to one of the schools to teach English, and at first we were like, no big deal, you know? And then they had us sit down to start planning, and we had these guidelines that everybody had to do at first. And then we spent like an hour or two on it, and then when we showed up to teach, we realized how intense and how you never know what's going to happen in your classroom. So that was a big, that was like a big eye-opener, as one. And so we had ages that ranged from like four years old to, I think, that guy was like 27, 40-something. He was an adult, and everybody that showed up was so eager to learn and so excited to be there that, like, you could, they were just so excited. Just anything?
No, I don't, actually.
Oh, sorry. Who's next?
So this is the Community Action Project that we did. So it was a service trip, so we did go to help the people. And so we decided, first off, we went out in the community and asked them what they needed mostly, and we came up with a few solutions, but the one that stood out for us was the park, which was, which is incredible. So, I just lost my train of thought, excuse me. So this is the formula, this is the best formula that we came up with. The feasibility, how manageable or doable it is, how much they need it, the passion the villagers put out there for them to complete the project with us, and also engaging everyone, even the little kids, as you can see in later on pictures. First off, we had the plan for the CAP project, then we went shopping for the equipment that we needed, and then there we were breaking the ground for the park. The park was just sort of rough ground, and we had to break ground to put the concrete in it. And here's my friend Ben, who just stood there with a shovel to take a pose for the picture. And as you can see there, that's us carrying rocks and just trying to clean up the place a little bit better. And we also had to carry buckets of water, obviously, to mix the sand, the cement. Yeah, this is just some more pictures, as you can see. It was a really good, it was a really incredible experience, too. It really feels good to help people, I mean, pretty sure everybody knows that. And this was just, I don't know, it still sticks in my heart right now. I feel emotional right now about this. And I don't really have much to say, unless my partner has more to say.
CAP days were the hardest. We definitely worked the hardest, and that's when you built your friendships, that's when you knew who was there when you needed it. And that's when you knew not to joke around with Ms. Dodge because she was like, get to work.
So a quote that really stood out to me while we were there, it was by my mother, Teresa. It was when I was LDD, and it was while we were doing the CAP project. It was alone, I cannot change the world, but I can cast a stone across the waters to create many ripples. And it made such a big impact because, at first, like, it's just this idea that doesn't seem like, oh, people, yeah, like, whatever, it's a park, it'll make them happy. But once we started seeing how much the community would help us, and how eager they were, and how excited, and how they, they were like already trying to run and play on it, and like, the cement wasn't even done or dry yet. And then when we were all done and we were doing Big Love, which was an appreciation to the community for letting us come and help them at the end of events, during Big Love, some of like the host moms that we had from the community started crying because they appreciated it so much. And that's kind of like what made us realize that we couldn't have done this without them, and it was just very impactful.
Unfortunately, now we are at the end of our trip, where we have to do our final reflection, basically go over all the things we have learned throughout this entire trip, which was only like, what, 16 days? It felt like a year. They're like the best year of my life. But we basically go over everything we've learned, we make these journey maps, which basically just, it explains how much this whole trip impacted us in different ways and at different points in time, and, which people really impacted you. I can say, every single person in these pictures, except for me, impacted me the most. Like, they were the, they changed me in a way that I could probably not describe right now and, you know, not take a long time. That is, there's another slide. Yep, and then the following day, we leave for Constanza, this beautiful, mountainous wonderland that we got to, what? We got to, we got to learn so much about, and we got to make a change in so many people's lives here. And unfortunately, we did have to leave, but it was probably one of the best experience in all of our lives. But I'll let them say that, because I shouldn't speak for you. There's, luckily, though, this isn't the end for us. I believe we're all ambassadors with the program, we'll be going on our second year. And what we'll be doing, we'll be going to a bunch of summits with Global Glimpse. They'll be introducing us to the college and the business world, get some opportunities to teach our upcoming Global Glimpsers, the current ninth grade class, about what they're going to need to do to prep. There are a bunch of blogs you can read online at the website that is up there somewhere. It's not, I'm sorry. Yeah. That's not the, that might be, that might be.
I would just like to thank everybody. This was an incredible trip. The kids changed so much. I changed, and this was my second year that I went, and it really does something to you within your heart.
I just wanted to say that this was an incredible trip. I saw the changes in the kids last year and this year. It changes, it changed me as a human being, and my hope is that many teachers from the Greenfield High School will take advantage of this. I thank Karen Patnold for being incredibly supportive and helpful in the whole process. And we are now in our third year of the Global Glimpse program, and we're now a Western Mass cohort, which now we have Northfield, I mean Pioneer, Westfield, North Hampton, and I believe Amherst with us, so in Springfield. So we've grown tremendously in Western Mass since the beginning of this, so it's an incredible program. Thank you for supporting us, and thank you guys, you did a great job tonight.
Thank you very much, everyone. It looks like a wonderful, wonderful trip, and it was just so great to hear you say that helping people feels good, because it really does, and it was really great to hear about the lessons you're learning and just get a, get a glimpse at your global glimpse. So thank you very much. Are there any questions or comments from committee members? I know that we are, we have some time constraints, but do you want to entertain any, if there are any? Member Collins?
Well, just, just to thank the teacher that's heading this program up, it's kind of a leap when you want to do something new and different for a school district. And to thank all the students for coming tonight. What amazes me the most is you can, is the opportunity, you can grow up in a little place where you don't have much worldly experience, and your school system can transport you to somewhere else in the world. And I loved you talking about how the trip changed you, so I think that does it for me. I'm really glad you came tonight.
Thanks, Member Collins. Any other questions, comments, anything? Okay. Yes, Superintendent?
I just want to say how proud I am of each of you. This wasn't something you had to do, this was something you wanted to do, and you don't have to continue as ambassadors, but I hear from each of you how much it impacted you. And I know that it doesn't end with you, that you're going to take it to the next step, and that it's going to benefit you in your career and whatever you choose to do next. And you all have so much talent and so much potential, and it's really exciting to see you making such a difference. Thank you for inspiring all of us. And thank you to Ms. Dodge for your work on this, and Ms. Patnold, it's really exciting that we've been able to build and sustain this. Thanks.
Absolutely. Thank you. Thanks again. We look forward to the next presentation. Okay, Ms. Collins, thank you so much for your patience. I know that we have very little time, and you need to get out of here at 7:45. Committee members, there are two very pretty, single-page documents that Carol passed out just prior to the meeting. Look like this. Okay, and take it away.
Okay. Thank you for having me tonight, and I'll make it brief, but this is just kind of an update. There's a lot of exciting things going on. I was here roughly a year ago. This is kind of an update from last year. The vertical page shows you how the energy use is trending, and except for Green River School, which is currently closed, we've seen things current, you know, pretty much staying where they're at. We do have some projects underway, and the main reason that I'm here tonight is because we have a very great opportunity to work with EverSource on their municipal energy upgrade program. It's on an abbreviated timeline, but we're very lucky that we're able to take advantage of it to get lighting, both interior and exterior, changed to LEDs for no cost to the school department. And it's going to be done by EverSource's vendor before December 15th. It's going to save us approximately $30,000 a year just in the schools alone. There's also a few other town buildings that are being done. So the, the landscape pages just gives you a little snapshot of what I do all day, a little look at the fun I get to have with numbers, and they are fun. So it's probably too much, but I, anyway, trying to figure out what's the most useful, what's the most helpful, but it just kind of shows you where costs have been going over the last three years in the top bar there. And in the bottom part shows you how this project kind of plays out throughout all the schools. So again, the short of it is that for us, it has a payback of two to three years, which is phenomenal in the energy world, and then we continue to save in perpetuity. And another added huge benefit that the central maintenance department is very grateful for is that it'll minimize their having to replace lights, which is currently a pretty big, big task and a big expense in materials. So this program has to be completed by, was there a question? No, sorry. This program has to be completed by December 15th, and we've already been in touch with central maintenance, and we'll coordinate with everyone to work around the school schedules. The installer has agreed to work the second shift so that it doesn't disrupt school hours. So, you know, we're doing everything we can to kind of minimize any negative impact and get the project done and start saving, and the lighting will be better, too. So that's just another small benefit. So that's, that's really the reason, I believe, that the mayor asked me to come, and we're also working on several other projects, all to save energy and to keep our schools working better than ever, getting rid of leaks at four corners with rooftop units that should be replaced this fall. The, we're looking at rooftop solar for four other schools in addition to the high school project, which is slowly trudging along because it's super complicated. But I'm confident we're getting, we're rounding the corner. The new solar market just was announced last week, so everything's kind of been on hold, and now they can start their engines, and of course, not internal combustion, but, and I'd say that kind of covers most of it. So again, you know, in trying to get, convey information, I heard, you know, I know last time I was here, I was asked to send quarterly reports, but I find that all that does is show you the energy consumption and doesn't really convey any information. It doesn't mean anything unless you're comparing it to something else, or unless you're tracking or benchmarking, which is what our office does. So I know I haven't forwarded those in recent months, but that's because I have them if you want them, but they're really useless unless there's some context to put them in. So I'm happy to work with you, and I'm looking at Superintendent because I know that was what we had discussed. But I think that we do a lot of other things to analyze the data that makes it useful for us to know where we should proceed, which is why I like the BTUs per square foot is a much better, more accurate figure to really gauge what's going on in a building. So again, as I had mentioned before, I'm happy to, you know, try to find something that really conveys what it is that's important, that the committee would like to know, and I'm happy to do that.
Thank you, Carol. So this morning or midday, when we exchanged emails, it was my understanding that a vote of the committee would be helpful to you in order to move the project forward. I'm not sure that that's actually the case, though, given what I'm hearing is that it's essentially just changing out light bulbs.
Pretty much, yeah.
I know that, and I've mentioned this to Mayor Martin in a previous meeting, related to the solar panels, we will need a vote when we look at a timeline for that. I don't want to confuse things today. So with that being said, this does, you know, it seems to me like it is something that can be coordinated with the superintendent in terms of, you know, changing light bulbs, and I think it's great, and I just want to express appreciation for you and the work that you do for Greenfield and for coming today and for your patience with our communication triangle. And also, I forgot my train of thought, but it'll come back to me. Any questions or comments from committee members at this time? Superintendent?
So first, I'd really like to thank you for providing this. I always find these reports very useful, especially, as you pointed out, the year-to-year BTUs per square foot is very interesting. I think what we're looking to do is be good partners and good stewards of that energy and resources in our schools. So if we know how we're trending, it's kind of helpful for us in our green teams in each school building to say, wow, we're really trending in a positive direction, we're using less and less energy each year, and I know that translates into real savings for the town. It's amazing to see that you have estimated at least $30,000 a year of savings from the LED light bulbs, and we're happy to help facilitate that. Do you have any sense of the timing on the rooftop assessments for the solar? Any idea when we might expect some new?
We've gotten some preliminary numbers just actually yesterday, so we're still kind of sorting through them, and then we'll be, again, we have to do more calculations in terms of savings and discuss it with the mayor and, you know, just kind of evaluate how, if that's the route that we want to go.
Could we have a meeting with, maybe the town, if the mayor wants to be involved, and the facilities, individuals for both town and school, and myself, to evaluate that information once it comes in?
Sure.
Thanks.
Mayor Martin?
I thought this also might be a good time to give a brief update on Green River School.
Okay. So we, again, so we did a very lengthy procurement process, and the hope was, my personal hope was that we would be able to replace the heating system with a highly efficient VRF heat pump system, similar to what was done in the Davis Street administration building, which is now being reinstalled at the town hall. Since that time, there are even more advances in the technology, and the costs have come down. So it's, it's made it more competitive with gas, which is what we were initially looking at. So we did this very lengthy, like I said, procurement process to try to, you know, get the most efficient and cost-effective system, because we understand that cost is always a, you know, driving factor, and we want to aim high, but there are constraints. always a, you know, driving factor, and we want to aim high, but there are constraints. So, we, despite our best efforts in hoping that we would get several responses, we got one. And the cost exceeded our budget by quite a bit. So, we went back to that contractor who we've worked with several times. We have a really good relationship with them to see what it would cost to do the gas system then and see, okay, you know, maybe we tried, but maybe we have to look at something else. So, everything that they've come back with has all been far exceeding our budget. So, I've been working very closely with them and trying to exhaust some other avenues to bring the cost down, to look at other options. And I think at this point, we're looking to possibly reissue the RFP again to try to get some more responses, more competition over the winter months, which will work out probably better, more in our favor. There was a large amount spent for the asbestos remediation, which ate up a lot of the budget, roughly a third. So, unfortunately, that's kind of what we needed. But I don't know if you want to talk about, let me to?
I believe the school committee with the superintendent's participation decided that the fall of 2019 would be the start of a new program at Green River, and there would be no need for the school in January. So, just confirmation on that. We'll help the energy department prepare their RFP and with their closing end dates for construction.
So, thank you, Mayor Martin. There is actually a need for the school committee to follow up on the information that was just provided and to have a discussion about any start time of the new program at the Green River School. But I believe that you're accurate in thinking that next year is going to be a better start time. We can put that on the agenda for next month.
Sure. Great.
Especially now that we have the information that's very helpful. We had some preliminary information from Mayor Martin before, so.
And I will say, I've been working exhaustively trying to meet the November deadline and trying to, I have been able to make some things work, and it's going to happen. But, yeah, thank you.
We appreciate you and the work that you're doing and understand the complexity. And thank you so much.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions for Carol? I know she has to leave in one minute.
My daughter's going to be on the street in a --
One minute.
Two minutes.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks to every --
Is this your Wi-Fi? Oh, my God, I'll turn it off.
Thanks to everyone for entertaining a change in the agenda. I think we can jump right back into subcommittee reports. Member Ward, would you like to start?
No.
How about Member Ward? Please start. Thank you.
Our budget subcommittee is meeting a couple of times a month. We started that last month. We do that to sort of keep things tight in the way of meeting time. We're meeting once midday. That's the first Wednesday of the month, I believe. And then we have another meeting, I think it's the third Monday, and that's also five, that's an evening meeting, 5:00 or 5:30. We do this sort of to satisfy many needs. This is a large community. We want to be as transparent as possible with our budget, and this allows for openness to anybody that would like to attend. We've been working toward getting a recommendation together for you this evening for the FY19 budget. We've recently said hello to a new business manager who has done a magnificent job with the superintendent in putting this budget together. Most recently, we met on Wednesday, October 3rd, and the group, the full subcommittee, voted two to one to recommend that the budget that we were working with at that time, it's a work in progress. And we voted that the budget at that particular time is, we support that. There are some questions. We are working with, as I said, a new business manager, a business manager that didn't necessarily set the budget last year. So, there are some things that are, you know, at that time, on the 3rd, seven weeks ago, that were unknown. I think that Member Hollins and the mayor have probably looked into that and either have questions or have gotten questions answered from the business manager and the superintendent. But at that time, that's what was, that was what was voted. I support that. I agree with having questions. But the bottom line is something that I think that we've decided that we can support. And that is my report.
Thanks, Member Ward.
So, I don't know if you care when we meet again, but we will meet again here in October. It'll be an evening meeting, 3rd Monday, and anyone with questions from the public, comments, welcome to attend.
Thank you, Member Ward.
Thank you.
I forgot to mention at the start of this section of our agenda that we do have a new school committee secretary that is attending to our subcommittee meetings. And this is the first time we've been presented with draft minutes. These are draft minutes. I just want to clarify that. So, these were just sent to the committee this evening, afternoon, and they're here printed for us. And I just want to clarify that they are in draft form, and they don't become official minutes until they get voted and supported by the subcommittee. So, just wanted to put that out there. I know that there was some interest in not only obtaining the subcommittee minutes, but also in essentially clarifying that they are draft minutes. We will have further discussion, Member Ward and other members, related to the FY19 budget that is coming up as agenda, next agenda item, main agenda item. And let's see, our, Member Karen, would you like to report out on health and safety?
Sure. So, you actually have two, in your packet, you have two draft minutes from two meetings, just as a thing to look back at. As we heard tonight, there is a holdup with the heating system at Green River. At that meeting, we didn't know the outcome of that, so we didn't have any recommendations to make, although I'm certain at our next meeting, we will be having a conversation about a recommendation to put forward. The other thing we talked about was that the, has been constant for us, is the parking situation at Four Corners, which has gotten lovely. Everybody should drive by and check it out. There are new lines and signs, and everybody's worked really hard to get that done. And we thought we would speak to both the mayor and the superintendent perhaps to see if there was another situation that needed help or should be a priority and how to work forward from there. It was a pretty quick meeting.
Thank you, Member Karen. Any questions for Member Karen? Okay. Seeing done. Let's see. Member Alexander is not here. I don't believe that negotiations met. Yes, actually, please. Thank you, Member Ekstrom.
So, actually, this, that there are minutes even presented may just be part of my inexperience and sort of Don's, I'll say zeal to hold a meeting. Not zeal, it's not the proper word. In any case, we didn't have enough members for a forum, and the superintendent was dealing with an outside concern related to the district, and so the meeting wasn't held. This, I mean, we went into recess, and my thinking was, not knowing, recess, I thought, could go on until you started again later. I didn't realize it had to be later that same day. And so, I said to Don, we're not doing this today, because here we are, and that's it. And he said, oh, okay, well, then we're going to adjourn. I said, okey-dokey. And so, that's what we did. It's really sort of a matter of just the paperwork, not, we didn't do anything.
Thanks, Member Ekstrom.
Sorry.
And there was a policy meeting that was scheduled and canceled. So, we will, I've asked Member Alexander to follow up on scheduling the first of our MAS-C-led policy meetings to address the first set of policies in our handbook, I believe, Section A. But look out for some email about that. That has not yet been rescheduled. School committee representatives, Member Hollins, was there? Is it building and construction?
There was a building and construction meeting, I think. It's the third Tuesday of the month, and most of the discussion, I think, is what's happening. Yes, there was on the fire complex, fire police complex. So, a lot of discussion about that, the complications. The committee felt, after a very long discussion, felt it should support separating the library project from the coordinated health and safety complex. And the chairperson, Jean Wall, went to city council to discuss that. We also had a long talk about the importance of fixing roofs. I wasn't the only person who thought that you can't neglect a leaking roof. And I had looked up what the school district had submitted with the request for money to fix roofs, which the mayor supported. And the submission was all about safety, preventing mold. You can tell an adult there's water on the floor, not to walk around it, but if you have an elementary school with 250 children and water in the gym, it's pretty hard for little children to remember. So, the request for roof repair had to do with safety, prevention of mold, prevention of deterioration, and everyone felt it was unwise for city council not to have approved that money. Carol Collins was there, was saying that some of the repair was related to equipment on the roof of Four Corners. I noticed in the warrant that was fixed for under $1,000. I don't know how much of the whole repair that was. Anyway, there was a unanimous sense that Carol, that Jean Wall, the chairperson of the committee, speak to city council both about the importance of funding the repair for school roofs and also separating the library decision from the whole complex of fire safety. And I think she reported back to us an email that she did speak to city council to no avail. But one of the important issues with the school request is that it wasn't really capital borrowing. It was the mayor's recommendation that be paid from basically facility savings accounts and that the money was there for that. So, there was a lot of concern that people didn't understand how important it was to fix leaking roofs in schools.
Thank you, Member Hollins. I appreciate you bringing up the capital expenses. At a recent meeting with the mayor, we did discuss a little bit about the capital expenses and the vote of the council. There was some confusion about the outcome of the vote. I did follow up with Kathy, our city clerk, and she did confirm that the vote failed due to a tie. And there is some interest, of course, and concern related to, that I've been expressed by multiple people, related to addressing those repairs that you were just referring to. So, at this time, I'm awaiting a little bit of clarification about process in terms of what the school committee may or may not be able to do and how we could manage anything, any of those kind of capital repairs. And as soon as I have a little bit more information on that, I will, of course, bring it to the committee if the committee is able to, or is needed to, take any action on that. Any questions or comments from Member Hollins? Thank you for the thorough report. And let's see, Member Ekstrom, would you like to comment on the collaborative for educational services?
Yeah. We had a meeting, as we do every three months, and the executive director went over his goals and what he's done to meet some of his goals. But there are also kind of presentations about programs that they have, one of the things being the Hack Academy, which is an alternative school, and services that they are bringing in from outside to help them with their students. And one that I thought that was really interesting is they are bringing in a nurse from Holyoke Community College and other places who is going to talk about body changes and relationships, you know, autism, sped disabilities, those kinds of things, which are never, none of those discussions are easy with your standard-issue kid, and it's really hard to find a program. And schools don't necessarily address things like that with special needs kids because it is, it's an ongoing discussion that you have for a long, long time. So, I mentioned that that would be a service that would be good to provide as just as general community engagement for parents and students. And so, hopefully, that's something that'll be coming along. But they really are really smart about a lot of the things that they provide, and I hope that we are taking advantage of that as much as we can.
Thank you, Member Ekstrom. Are there any questions or comments for Susan? Okay. Thank you. Okay. So, let's move right into our main business. And we will start off with a vote to support the modified FY19 budget. In your packet, there are the regular budget reports here, but there is also this packet that has a green diagram on the front, and this was sent to us by Steve via Joanne, via Jordana, via, via. I'd like to be a little bit more informal about this. I know that we had a subcommittee recommendation to support the FY19 modified budget. But I'd like to actually just hear from Steve first before we enter into any deliberation. It is my hope that we will vote on this this evening. That is the intention. I also want committee members to feel confident in their vote and have a full understanding and their questions answered. I am asking that members please make an attempt to get to the core of their question and to be clear and concise in their commentary. Thank you. Steve, please take it away.
Okay. After our last subcommittee meeting, I saw there were some questions as to the amount of data and trying to put that into a space. Oh, okay. Is that better? Is that better? Light is on. Okay. Is that better? All right. So, the amount of data and trying to get that into a way that is understandable for everyone in a way that you're used to seeing the data. With what I've given you in this package, you'll see a few things that have considerable amounts of information on it. One is a budget with everybody's position, what their step is, how much they make. That all ties back to the TMS budget, which ties back to the original budget that was drafted in, I believe it was April, the previous April. So, there's that. Yeah, 4/11, 6/18, 10/5. So, in the pages, what you'll see is a budget that tracks the 4/11 budget, which had a total amount of $19 million 005. The 6/18 budget, which had a total amount of $18,575. And then the 10/5 budget, which is October 5th, which is $18,575. So, the numbers have been very consistent since last April. There hasn't been, other than the $400,000 from the city and the $400,000 from the revolving account, there hasn't been a lot of change to these accounts. They have been extreme They have been extremely consistent. The budget that is the 10-5 budget reflects all the changes that have happened since that June budget that first came out, the 618 budget. So, that's what that does. And then, it goes from major account lines to a summary format that you're used to, to a very detailed budget spreadsheet that includes everybody, the people, where they're working, all that sorts of information. So, you can get into the weeds as much as you want to on this. But what I tried to do in the first pages here is to step you through the process, kind of give you the metadata going forward, and then show what minimal changes have been made to the budget, and then the bottom-line budget, which has always been $18,575,000. That has not changed since that was voted by the City Council several, several months ago. So, what happened with this budget? If you look at the first pages here, you'll see that there was a superintendent's budget as well as a school committee budget, and that's that green diagram up front. It ranged from about $18 million to $19 million. Next came in the mayor's budget at $18,175,000. Very round numbers. And from that $18,175,000, the City Council restored $400,000. So, that's your $18,575. All these budgets add up to $18,575,000. That has, again, that has not changed at all since the date that was the Town Council voted that in. And that can't change. So, there's no way that that can happen. How did we get our total budget of around $22 million? Well, the $18,575 from the town, $1.15 million from grants, and then $2.856 million from various revolving accounts. Again, there's always been a plan to use revolving accounts. That plan dates back to when the original budget was made, back in, you know, March or April. And then, the plan then changed to handle the $400,000. There was an $800,000 deficit, 400 from the city, 400 from revolving accounts. So, the $2.8 million, the $1.175,000, and the $18,575,000, that's your $22 million budget in total, and it has been very, very similar going forward. If you look at the next page, that is a summary of the budgets. So, if you look at line M, that is each school, each expense category, or most notably DESI category for the 10-5 budget, the grand total, so which is, that's the 10-5 budget plus any revenue added to it. Then, the 618 budget, that is only the appropriated budget. So, if you look at the first North Parish line, and this will illustrate the fact there, that the 10-5 budget, local appropriation, was $515,000. The 618 budget was $478,000, and the 411 budget was $468,000. So, you see a difference of about $20,000 or $30,000. Well, North Parish hired a lot of new people. So, that's where those changes would have come in, changes in budget amounts, changes in people coming in. Yeah.
Sorry, can you explain grand total again?
Oh, grand total is $515,000 is the local appropriation. And then, when you add any of the offsets or the revenue to it or the grants to it, that will give you the grand total. Yep. Yeah. And if you look at that, that's a $22,588 at the very bottom there. Next you'll see is the revolving accounts as well as the grant accounts. And you'll see what was originally budget on 618, what needed to be done to reach the goal for 10-5. And again, it's extremely similar. Changes were made in order to account for new employees coming in, pluses and minuses here and there. But again, it's a very consistent amount of money across the way. And finally, on the last page is what you'll see is from the 411 budget to this current revised budget. What are the big changes that were made? Well, Federal Street sped paraprofessionals, there was a reduction in three FTEs. Instructional electives, there was a cost shift to various offsets. GHS teaching staff offset to various offsets, meaning grants are revolving. Cut in sub-teachers, a cut in regular-day tutors, a cost shift to therapy specialists, a reduction in secretarial sped staff. It seems that they lost one person. Then, tutor sped. I know there was a lot of concern about that one. The current budget has 107,000. The 411 budget had 15,000. When you look at all the people charged to that line, it adds up to 107,000. $15,000 was never going to cut it in that line. That may change as a year goes on, but I would rather fund it knowing what we know now rather than hope that $15,000 will be enough, as well as an additional teacher. So, that's the $430,000 in cuts. So, when you go from the $19,005,000, you subtract out $430,000, you get your 18, right around your $18,575,000. And that really is the big-picture budget summary going forward. Again, $18,575,000 is what you're being asked to vote. That has not changed since the school, the Town Council approved that amount several, several months ago.
Thank you, Steve. Superintendent, would you like to make any comments before committee members' questions?
I don't have anything further to add in summary. I think Steve has provided a good overview. You do have in your packet some really good summaries of what he's just provided, including the summary of what's in each offset account. And I think really what we're doing here is just trying to break it down in different ways. We're not really changing the substance of it. We're talking about what's here. We're summarizing it differently. We're providing more clarity. We're comparing it differently. We're describing it, how we're using the funds. But there's no substantial shift. What we're doing is we are heavily relying on our reserves. We are putting our funding first towards classroom teachers and support needs, and we are adhering to our policies, and we're bringing changes to that to the committee. So, I think there's no major changes here to the budget that was previously approved by the school committee, with the major exception that people have come and gone. And so, this budget attempts to address that. There are a few areas that I brought to Steve's attention that we need to continue to work, and those are minor. And again, they will not affect the bottom-line general fund dollar amount.
Thank you, Superintendent. Do committee members have questions? Yes, Member Ekstrom.
We do have one more question. And the answer is likely go to the subcommittee meeting. But what is the pothole account? Is that literally potholes?
That is, the state every year comes up with some additional funding, and it's basically for extraordinary costs throughout the year. So, generally, what schools do is say, oh, we've had a bunch of kids move in, so we had some extra costs. But they call it the pothole because it was to fill potholes in the spring.
Right, exactly. You just toss money down there and see what happens. All right, gotcha.
Gotcha.
Just wanted to make sure.
Member Hollins.
I was going to clarify that when the Greenfield School District collapsed and couldn't, it was about $3 million short, 100 people laid off. We had applied for some pothole funds because we couldn't figure out how to get the schools open. And that's what the '09 was. It was an attempt. I think Stan Rosenberg was helpful, bringing in. It wasn't always this amount of money. I think most of it was spent trying to help us get what we needed to just get our schools open.
Thank you, Member Hollins. Mayor Maron, do you have any questions?
Let me press the green button and look at your green chart in this green building. I have a couple of questions. I'm going to refer to, and of course, you weren't here. On May 22nd, we received a communication from the superintendent, and it related to the Town Council. It was actually sent to the City Council President and the councilors relating to the request for $400,000. In that request, there were some statements made. So, one of them I just want to check up on. It was predicted that there would be a growing enrollment to 1,875 students. And from the enrollment report tonight that we received, it looks like there's, excuse me, 1,771 students. That would be 104 students less than what was predicted. And at the time, I mentioned that the discussion on the number of students was very impactful to the total budget number. And my argument or strong discussion related to the presented mayor's budget to the council referenced my lack of confidence in an increase of 104 students. So, let me say that this evening, knowing that that 104-student increase has not occurred, I can't certainly vote against the 18. Let me say that I can't disagree with the appropriated budget from the City Council. But I'm curious as to how the $400,000 needed to produce, to take care of this enrollment increase is reflected now in the budget whereby the increase has not occurred.
I would say to that is that the original budget from the school committee was around the $19 million mark. So, you know, I can't comment on student enrollment because I wasn't around back then. But, you know, if the numbers turn out that it's not materialized, there was always a need for that extra money to meet what the school committee had originally earmarked for education, which was around the $19 million mark.
Okay, thank you. Also, in that communication in May, there was discussed that 34 students for OOD, out-of-district placement, would be at a cost of $3 million. In this budget, we're noting with the information for Greenfield Public School out-of-district placement, it's not 34 students, but it is now designated and calculated at 31 students. So, I can see there would be a decrease from the $3 million. Can you find that decrease in the current budget for out-of-district students?
Superintendent, do you have a comment?
I'd just like to thank our good work for returning three students to district. Every single penny that returns to this town means that we can hire a teacher, keep that student in district, do the right thing for that student. And those are usually dollars that we reinvest here, continue that positive trend. And that's what we talked about when we started a new program here at Greenfield High School. And I'm very proud of each one of those students that returns back is a life-altering difference for those students.
And I'm certainly happy that we're doing our mandated responsibility for all students. I would just want to ask that question again. Can we find our special ed OOD out-of-district placement cost? How does it reflect the reduced number of students in out-of-district?
From the information that was given to me back when this was originally done by TMS, there was about $2.7 million, 1 million out of the regular budget, and about $1.7 million from various revolving accounts. So, a total out-of-district budget of $2.7 million. If, I would have to look to see exactly who those students that left and what the cost impact, because as you know, what drives that are some really high-dollar kids. So, these may be, these, you know, seven or eight kids that left may be the $25,000 or $30,000 kids rather than the $250,000 kids. So, I'd be happy to look into that.
Good point. In the in-district funding, how do we, where are those funds coming from? Do we have it labeled in a number of different line items for in-district funding?
I'm sorry, in-district funding? I'm not familiar with that.
Are you saying in-district special education services?
So, my conversation in the past has to do with all-funds budget and the number of accounts being used, number of funding accounts, revenue-funding accounts being used to fund various budget line items. And the, I never called them rainy-day funds, but I've often mentioned that the balance at the end of the fiscal year in the balance of those funds, whether they're school choice or circuit breaker, that we always have between $2.4 and $3.4 million left over every year. So, the, that extra money, how does it relate to the, well, let me just quote from here. "These accounts are not rainy-day funds. We have increasingly relied on these funds as a significant source of our annual all-funds budget to create high-quality in-district programming for our students, maintain our programs, including arts and music, and attract students to Greenfield." So, how are those funds being used in in-district? In your budget proposal, which is, you know, excellent, just and easy to follow, you indicate what the offsets are and where they come from. So, this budget year, you're planning on using $1.2 million from choice, I believe, right in that vicinity. So, is that dedicated to in-district programming whereby we are using choice money to pay for salaries?
The, those funds are spread out throughout the district, and, for example, a lot of those funds are used for choice students, a variety of things, if you're talking about choice specifically. It could be regular ed teachers, it could be special ed teachers. In the left-hand side of this, the very last page, it breaks down who is being charged to each individual revenue line or grant line and what the amount is. So, if you're looking at, maybe circuit breaker would be a good place to start. That would be the line J.
Is there any other page here?
A bulk of that circuit breaker money is being used for out-of-district tuitions. So, essentially, what that is, it's the money is coming in from out-of-district tuitions and then going out as out-of-district tuitions. If you look at some other special ed, for example, the special ed tuition line over on column W, you'll see that a, several special ed teachers, behaviorists, as well as a special ed teacher coming in, being paid out of that special ed tuition line. So, what we try to do is match up the revenue stream with the use of that as best we can. The only one that we don't is school choice because basically, the DOE says you can use it for whatever you need to use it for. So, it'll be a mix of special ed and regular ed students.
Thank you. I don't mean to monopolize the time. I have a few more questions.
Sure.
You can postpone me until let other people speak if you want. One of my concerns, and I've spoken about often over the past several years, is that to use choice money in the operating budget creates a future calamity. So, I'm seeing in this budget quite a few teachers budgeted that are kind of, you know, regular courses and regular curriculum, and I'm wondering what if happens? How are we going to deal with that in the following budgets?
Yeah, you're, I think we've, in the budget subcommittee meeting, we've talked about that before, and the mantra has always been, this is not an unlimited supply of money. This is fine for now, but it is not an unlimited supply of money. So, it has to be used very carefully going forward. Luckily, the revenues have been fairly steady. Luckily, the revenues have been fairly steady going forward. But at some point, a plan needs to be made in order to go ahead and wean ourselves off those revenue accounts because as you dip into it a little bit, a little bit, a little bit, a little bit, there's a finite amount of money there, which took years and years and years to build up. So yes, that is a very valid concern. It's one we're cognizant of and one that needs to be addressed going forward because school choice luckily comes in at about 500 and some odd thousand dollars. Circuit breaker luckily comes in at about 900,000-plus dollars. So that's, you know, 1.4, 1.5 million right there that I, hopefully, we can rely on going forward. And according to your policy, it's that you need to bank the money in order to spend it in the next fiscal year. So what I did was I did take a look at several of the accounts, the revolving accounts, and yes, there is enough money within the limits of the policy. For example, the school, the school choice line, I'm sorry, the circuit breaker line needs to have a balance of 600,000. So that was a pretty good policy going forward because that creates a tipping point. So as the reports come in, you'll see where that, if you're starting to eat into that balance, and then those balances are falling below what your policy limits are, that will help you plan for the next years coming up.
Yes, I think, just to follow up that thought, if, I think we're close to 500, 600,000 in the choice money for, for teachers. If our choice revenue decreases in Chapter 70, which is notoriously stable from the state funds, that would mean you would have to move the money from, the lack of revenue from choice to the local funds. And that would increase the taxes paid on a local basis because the state has pretty much abandoned increased revenues for schools.
Yeah, yeah. I had heard that recently, they were looking at about a 2%, 2.5% inflation rate for the schools. So if you take what our Chapter 70 money, add, add 2%, 2.5% to it, it comes out to a fairly significant amount of money. But, you know, that offsets years when it was 0.8% inflation rate. So I think in the next year or two, it'll, it'll be better. But you're right, there are, there are rainy days ahead, most likely.
Mayor Martin, if I could ask you to pause. I'm seeing Susan Ekstrom with her hand up. Thank you.
Just following up on what we were discussing, you said at some point, we need to change how we're accessing our funds and taking dribs and drabs from here and there, at some point, a year from now, or at some point, 10 years from now?
Right now, I project that you'll have about 2.2 million left in your revolving accounts to, for next year. So next year should be fine, especially with a 2.5% inflation rate on Chapter 70. The year after that, if it's managed properly, I would say you'll be okay, depending on what happens to Chapter 70, which I don't know what will happen to Chapter 70. And so we're talking maybe five years down the line, three to five years down the line, that, that something will have to be considered, yes.
And would it be safe to say with the speed or lack thereof with which this boat turns around, it might be wise to start thinking about or planning on that more quickly than that?
Yeah, it's always better to plan, yes.
Okay.
You can come back to me, thank you.
Great, thank you. I have a quick follow-up to that. I actually appreciate, appreciate the conversation about the choice account. And I will say to Member Ekstrom that we've been having this conversation for a very long time. I'm sure that others at the table could attest to the conversation being, going on long before I've been sitting here at the table. And part of what we do here at the Greenfield Public Schools is we do manage our money responsibly, and we do hold balances on purpose so that we can utilize them in needs of a crisis, if there is a crisis. And so I, I, this is part of why it is not okay for us to just spend down our choice account. And I appreciate the responsible budgeting that we've seen at the Greenfield Public Schools in order to set us up for success and to provide some stability when things happen that we don't know are going to happen, or when they could happen, at any time. So I appreciate that conversation. And I just have one question related to a new position. Do, Superintendent or Steve, what is the new teacher hire? There was one new teacher hire listed, I believe, on page three in the changes from the 411 budget. It's down at the bottom, additional teacher.
I know the name, but let me find out.
Okay, great, thank you. Yeah, no, I prefer to know the position, not the name. And I also just want to thank you for creating a simple chart here about the changes that have occurred.
That's the one I need. A grade two at Federal Street.
Thank you. And a last comment before I yield to Member Hollins, I see your hand. I noticed the secretarial sped staff reduction. And I just want to say that in the past, I think I've heard that there's a need for some additional support in that particular office. And I just want to kind of express a little bit of concern and support for the Special Education Department. And if there is a need to hire in a secretary in that area, I would support that. Member Hollins.
Thank you. I want to join the other members of my committee thanking Steve for the data. There's, there's no question, we have excellent data. In fact, I'm also looking, you probably did the data on enrollment. It's, it's great. And I don't want anything I say to take away from how much I appreciate the data you've provided. A concern I've had, and I think it was also shared by committee members, is we received three, these three excellent reports at our last meeting. They had changed, I think, from prior reports. These represent 23 pages of budget detail, 45 different columns of information, and approximately 5,000 to 6,000 cells of data. We had, maybe while Steve was introducing them, I was trying to read them. I'm pretty, I think I'm pretty good at budgets. It is impossible to assimilate. You have to look at all three at once to understand them. And so I don't have any, so I have a concern that the budget subcommittee had very limited time to look at these three reports together and understand them. And we have to get, have to be able to look at them. So over the weekend, I spent about 10 hours trying to look at the reports in total. And I just, I just, I completely can support, because there's no choice, but I completely support the appropriation, a motion that our appropriation be adapted to match, our budget be, match the appropriation from city council, because we don't have a choice. What we have a choice about is which money, which items in our budget we put where. And I want to disagree with our business manager on, you know, we have 2.2 million in our revolving funds, so there's no reason to worry about five years. I think the worry is going to come next year. And I'd like to explain why I think so. The fact that we have a 2 million balance in revolving funds, you have to remember that each fund can only be used for what the fund is about. So preschool tuition can only be used for preschool. It can't cover a high school chemistry teacher. And about 150,000 is in these after-school funds. So the fact that there's a body of money, a total, doesn't mean that we're clear on how it's spent. And I think we have a very big problem in school choice next year. I'd like to take just 10 seconds to explain it, why I think it's really important to send this back to committee, if I could. Props. In all of Steve's reports, he's showing that we get a little more than 500,000 a year in school choice. And we take the money from one year under a policy, bank it, and use it next year. So we had about five, I think the revenue from last year was 536,000. We didn't spend it. Removing it, it's the basis of our FY '19 budget. We're going to get about 500,000 this year in revenue. It's in Steve's reports. We're not going to spend it. We're going to use it next year. So what's the big deal? It's because this year, our school choice, we're not spending 500,000, we're spending a million because we had extra money that we, as Steve mentioned, we built up. There's a choice about what you're going to pay for. What are we paying for this year that we didn't pay for last year? Because next year, when this comes over, and this is the basis of our budget, we don't have this extra money. So next year, our school choice, we're going to have about 500 in our revolving fund, whereas this year, we're spending a million. This year in our revolving fund, and I don't remember this being true, I have brought up at multiple of our meetings, my concern about the high school elective program, which used to be in a cost center in Untouchable at 250,000, that the cost center went away. This year, the amount in our regular budget is $14,000, and the whole amount is now in choice. So I don't think that's a choice. We have to have the elective program. The last time we took it out of the budget, we were written to by NEASC that we were going to lose high school accreditation. We shouldn't, in my opinion, fiddle with that in our choice account. We've moved our high school music teacher into choice. I think she's been in our regular budget. We've moved our high school health teacher into choice. We've moved our high school phys ed teacher into choice. We've moved our high school art teacher into choice this year. We've moved about six other high school teachers, French, Spanish, history, physics, English, French, into choice. When we, we're going to have to reduce what we're spending from choice by 500,000. I think that's really risky. None of those positions are a choice for us. I think we should put, I think we should put into that 500,000 we're paying from choice things where we have some options and we can talk about different ways of doing it. I think we should instead put in maybe 100,000 for transportation, because we need to talk about transportation. I think we should put in some money for some other things that have come up where we might have different ways of doing business. But I don't think our elective program should be in choice because next year's budget, we have 500,000 in choice. We don't have a million. So half of what we're paying out of choice this year has to go, and it can't go into preschool tuition, not all those high school positions. So I can't support the budget the way it's designed. There was some point where we were told we wouldn't put core teaching positions in choice. We have lots of things that we could pay for out of choice. We could pay for anything out of choice, but I don't think it should be our core teaching staff. I definitely don't think it should be our high school elective program. So that's one concern I have about how those decisions were made. I think it's important to go back to Budget Committee because there's some other things we, we didn't really have time to go through and see if things are placed right. So the presentation tonight said that North Parish really hadn't changed much, and we were looking at the totals from year to year. But if you have time to go through all the detail, our lead special ed teacher at North Parish is, is in line 700 and something under therapy specialist, that's 71,000. And our social worker at North Parish, to my knowledge, they've almost always been in the North Parish budget, has also moved under special ed therapy. So that's 140,000 that should be in the North Parish budget, I believe. They're not, they're just part of the early childhood program and have been in the budget, unless I'm wrong. And I also think, like in the detail that I went through, for Four Corners, for example, there's four kindergarten teachers in the budget. This is in the detail budget that we received dated October 1. I don't mind if there's four kindergarten teachers if we need them, but on the report we had today, for enrollment, now that we know our enrollment, it says there are 43 children in kindergarten at Four Corners, and we need four, three teachers with classes of 14. But in the budget we received October 1, there's four kindergarten teachers, I think. So, so I think there are two or three items that need discussion. I, I can't support moving our elective programs and our core high school teachers into choice. I think there's other options, what to put into choice, but not core teachers. And I don't think the Budget Committee really had time to look at the detail and talk about it because we got the reports the morning of our last subcommittee meeting. But I don't want to take away from the tremendous amount of important data we have in the reports or the hard work that's been done on the reports. But I do think there's a reason for a budget subcommittee, and it's looking at details. And I, I think there's going to be a big issue next year when we're planning the 20 budget, if we only have a half a million in choice, then a half a million of what we're currently paying for out of choice has to go, and we, we just shouldn't risk putting our core teachers there. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Hollins. I have a little bit of commentary. I'm looking at a budget dated 3/12/2018, and I'm seeing that our integrated arts, not all of them are listed as an offset, but I'm seeing many of them are listed, many of them are listed as coming out of an offset. And my understanding is that that offset is the choice account. This is not a new change. This is something we have been talking about for years. For the years that I have been on this committee, we have been talking about how pulling salaries out of the choice account is not sustainable. I am so appreciative of it coming to the table today because it is a very, very important topic. Our superintendent keeps reiterating this, not only, you know, at our meetings, but also privately in meetings, that there, we're going to have a budget cliff next year. So what I'm seeing here, and I am feeling so much appreciation for this budget that we have in front of us, what I see here is that our superintendent and our administrators have taken the requests of the school committee, and they've crafted a budget to reflect that. And I also know that many people fought very hard to get additional funding from our council, and that impacted some of the other departments here in our city. And the reality is, is that we need this money. I'm hearing two conflicting arguments here, sort of underlying. One is, we can't spend out of choice, we shouldn't spend out of choice, that's irresponsible.
I didn't say that at all.
And then on the other hand, I'm also hearing that, oh, there's a request, time and time again, to actually spend down our revolving accounts, including our choice account. So I think that what we have here is actually a really excellent bridge, and I appreciate it so much. And you're absolutely right, Member Hollins, that we are facing a cliff in the next year. And I think that, you know, it's very smart to bring it up and to have this discussion now. But I also think that what we need to do now is to support this budget. This is our working budget. We have been working with this budget. And now Steve has taken the time to refine things. Superintendent has been working very closely with Steve in order to craft this clear presentation. And I think that what we need to do today is to vote this budget and move forward and begin to have conversations about how we are going to manage FY '20. That's my position. I, Steve wanted to respond to Member Hollins, and then...
I'd like to respond to what you said because I think you mischaracterized what I said.
Member Hollins, I would like Steve to respond. I jumped in there, and Steve would like to respond to your...
Point of order.
Yes, Mayor Martin.
Personal privilege is allowed by the Member Hollins for your rebuttal of her statements.
Sure, Member Hollins.
Well, I don't have any concern about the amount we're spending out of choice. I didn't say that at all. My concern is what we have decided to put in the choice to spend. We could take absolutely anything in our budget, put it to choice. We could put 500,000 of transportation in choice. So I'm not at all complaining on what we're spending this year. I helped draft the, that's, that's not what I said. I'm concerned what we've chosen to put in choice, it puts it more at peril than if we had put things like, for example, we just voted a $25,000 secretary for the school committee. Why is that not in choice? Because it's something new, we need to see how it's going. And instead, we put our music teacher in there. I just think we should put into choice things we can talk about and not core teachers. But I said nothing against the amount of money we're spending out of But I said nothing against the amount of money we're spending out of choice.
Thank you, Member Hollins, for the clarification. Superintendent Harper, and then Steve.
I'd like to just say a few things about this budget, and it is a working document. And Steve and I have had conversations about the use of choice. So, to start with, I actually don't support the use of choice for core teachers in general. I think they should be in our general funds budget. I think they should be funded with our local dollars, and I think that's the right way to approach it. But the question, the implication, that it's a choice because it's coming out of choice, while it sounds convenient, it's actually not true. This isn't all funds budget. We've moved away from a local budget. We used to have a local budget, and then grants, and then choice. The school committee was not looking at an all funds budget, which included the revenue from choice and the revenue from grants. You weren't looking at those positions. You weren't approving those positions. You weren't talking about those positions, because they were coming from somewhere else, and it was a rainy day fund. And this budget is a radical departure from that. And so, instead, we're looking at all of the available funds and all of the needs of the district. So, we're just funding the district's needs with the available revenue sources. To suggest that teachers are somehow at jeopardy, I think is a really, I think it's a reckless statement. If there's a teacher sitting at home watching, and you are funded out of choice, your position is secure. We are budgeting carefully, and your position is no more at risk than somebody else's. And I think we have to do our due diligence and provide assurance to our teachers, and I want to say that we are doing that. Funding out of choice is not a choice. It doesn't mean that it could just go away. It's not, we're prudently looking at projections and budgeting for the year ahead. So, if you were going to take the argument, however, that it's choice, then you can't then say, use that same argument to put half a million dollars of transportation in it. That's no more an option for us. We have to transport our students. So, the issue is not where is the money coming from. It's the same thing that Steve said at the beginning, and the mayor said, and Susan Hollins said, and Adrian said, which is, we are looking at needs that exceed the local funds budget, and so, we're using an unsustainable approach, which is offsetting with revenue from choice and other sources. We're all saying the same thing. We're saying it in different ways, and there needs to be a long-term conversation and solution about that. But the place for that is in the FY '20 budget conversation. This budget has already been voted by this committee. We're paying people on this budget. You can have the discussion tonight. We can move, Steve and I will continue to discuss, and we may move people out of choice and into general funds, and move somebody else into that. The bottom line is going to be a local funds budget, the same dollar value, and we can continue to discuss it, could go back to subcommittee, we could come back to this committee. You're going to have the same people, it's just moving line items.
Thank you, Superintendent. Steve?
Okay. Yeah, no, I wanted to say, and echo exactly that. It's, from what, from your statements earlier, I don't want any teacher to think that their job is in jeopardy because of choice, because that was definitely the implication I got from this side of the table. Secondly, this budget is out of the garage and down the highway already. You know, we're July, August, September, October into this. And essentially, what's going to happen is that it's shifting money. All you're being asked to do is vote a bottom line of 18,575. That will not change, no matter what. If, if that money come, doesn't, isn't applied to core teachers, if it's applied to transportation, if it's applied to supplies, if it's applied to anything else, those changes can be made on an ongoing basis, but it does not change the bottom line fact that 18,575 is the bottom line number. And then, in order to balance this budget, we're going to have to use money from choice, from charter, from all those other things, in order to reach the 22 million. How you want to arrange the debt chairs, that's up to you. But it does not change the fact that we need an 18,575,000 budget voted.
I saw you, Mayor Martin.
Yes, I cannot disagree that the bottom line is 18,575, and that's what I think is going to happen. That's been allocated, that's been budgeted. What we're discussing is, and I think, Steve, you brought it up first, at some time in the future, we've got to consider something. Susan, remember Susan Extrim brought up the statement, well, what's the future, five years, two years, next month? So, what I'm suggesting is that the fix in the future is now, so that we know that our choice has gone from 730 and change to 539,000. So, we know there's a decrease, and there's a pattern. We know that our choice in students have maybe capped. We know that we have put, and I didn't realize it, but Member Hollins has indicated, the GHS has got a chunk of money in choice. So, we're not talking about losing jobs. We're talking about transferring money from one source of funds, which is choice, next year, when we know we don't have the money, to then move it to the operating budget, and then we know we have a higher operating budget automatically. And I'm thinking it's going to be a lot greater than 2.5% on the increase in chapter 70 funds. So, when, as I mentioned earlier, when chapter 70 funds don't keep increasing enough as the local district budget, then the balance of the increase is passed on to the taxpayer. So, everyone talks about taxes. They need to know what a budget like this means, and for the council members to learn how this budget process goes. And part of it is that when you take from one department in the city and give to another, you create ripple effects and expenses in other departments. And now, we're, I am analyzing the 18,575, because I see a number of different areas that I question. Is there double entering of positions, or have we doubled positions? Where's the civic expenditure in the budget that I've recommended and wanted for seven We made a promise to the council over the years as school committee members, and as a counselor, when I was a city counselor, that we would provide always 250,000 for interesting, innovative electives. Maybe they're in here, but they're not under the old curriculum line item that I saw. It might be in there, because I saw other subject areas. It's possible. So, I'm just saying that I'm not going to vote for this budget, not because of the bottom line, but because of the line in between the top and the bottom. And I'm looking for, I'm looking for some planning in the future. I want to fix the future now, and when we review budgets for next year, in next month, then this is all going to be relative to what's going to be spent next year. And I'm not telling you anything you don't already know. The revenues are very important to putting the budget together. So, that's how I feel. I hope other members would reconsider supporting this budget now, and let's look at some of the details, or we can wait till next year, eight, 10 months from now, and review it all again. Thank you, Steve.
Thank you, Mayor Martin. Are there any other members that would like to comment? Cam, do you have your hand up? And then, I'll recognize you, Susan. I just want to allow other people to speak.
Thoughts on tabling? I know.
Is that a motion to table?
No. It's, I'm asking for thoughts on it. What do you, you know, because we're not getting, we're, where are you going to go with this? That's my concern, is...
Well, I'd like to entertain a motion to support the modified FY '19 budget.
I move to table.
In the amount. Okay?
Second.
All right. So, there's no discussion on that. All those in favor of tabling?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. That's three ayes.
No, all ayes as well.
Four. Great. All those against? Super. So, we are now tabling this conversation until November. In the meantime, this will go to the Budget Subcommittee. I want to clarify a request that I heard coming from the mayor, related to out of district costs. Would the committee like to receive information, updated information on out of district costs in order to support the conversation that will occur at the Subcommittee?
Any information.
I'm seeing some yasses. Seeing what? Would you all? That's two. That's just a minority. So, are you all interested in here, in updated information about out of district costs?
I think it's the most important line item in the entire budget, and it needs to have its own plan.
So, that's a yes?
Can we be on 10/5?
There is a plan, whether or not the school committee has seen it, or is aware of it.
Okay. So, what I'm seeing, or what I'm hearing, is that there seems to be a majority interest in having some updated information about out of district costs. So, I'm just putting that forward to be clear about what information is getting requested, and what will also be at the table for discussion.
Can I just clarify, so I know where I'm going with this?
Yeah.
Okay. So, essentially, you're okay with the 18,575, because that's what the city council voted. It's how much in total is being applied from the various revenue accounts and grant accounts, in order to bring that down, hold that over for a rainy day, a greater number. Is that what I'm...
Madam Chair, may I?
Yeah.
I guess one of the thoughts I had is that if we maintain a stable $2 to $3 million per year in a balance in the number of accounts, that maybe it's time to spend that down somewhat and go with a different crisis that has not happened. So, we can, we'll put more money into the special ed stabilization account, which allows us that crisis situation. But spend down the money that we have in various accounts that are, we have a policy. We have a cap on many of our policies, so we can go below the cap. We just can't go.
Yeah. So, right now, we're using about 2.1 million out of revolving accounts. You would like to see that...
Three. Maybe use 3 million.
3 mil...
Okay. The discussion on the use of funds is tabled, and it will go to Subcommittee.
Thank you.
I will say that folks are confused, because they're hearing two different things. The other thing is, did you have a question about the information that the committee would like to see related to out of district special education costs?
No, no. From what I can gather, it's, we're going to have to look at every single line item and ways to cut those line items, basically.
I don't, I don't have a response to that. I just want to make sure that the committee is, the committee is asking for out of district, updated out of district cost information, and that'll come to the discussion. Member Hollins?
Last quick comment. I just want to say, I spent at least 10 hours going over the report. I appreciate everything you did. I went over every revolving fund. I support every amount we're spending from every revolving fund. My issue is, I think what we're putting in the choice account should be things that we're looking at, not core staff. That's my issue.
Thank you, Member Hollins. So, discuss, further discussion on this is now tabled, and let's take a five-minute recess. We are considerably behind schedule, but I think we all need to stretch our leg. So, we returned from a six-and-a-half-minute recess. Thank you, everyone, for that. I think we all needed a couple minutes. We are moving on to business item number three on our list, which is student achievement reports, MCAS, and the new accountability measurements. So, the superintendent has provided, although I don't, it is. I need to search for my page, but Superintendent, if you want to start us off, give us an overview of what we're looking at.
Sure.
Thank you.
So, you have in your packet some information about the new accountability system. This used to be called our MCAS, the Massachusetts Comprehensive Assessment System. We're now referring to it as the Student Accountability Report. Sometimes you hear it as MCAS 2.0. There's been different language for it. This is our new student assessment result, and you can see there are some official results for 2018 for Greenfield. And so, there's a couple of important notes here. One is that every school in our district receives an accountability level or status. It's called an accountability classification. And in this year's reports, we have four schools, let's see, Discovery School at Four Corners, Federal Street, and Greenfield High School, whose accountability classification is not requiring assistance or intervention. And that's good news. That's, I don't want to say clean bill of health, but pretty close to it. And it's essentially a overall rating of how we're doing on a number of indicators, which I'll break down more in a second. And then, we have two schools, which are designated as requiring assistance or intervention. And you can fall into this category for a number of different reasons, and I've provided some information about that on this letter from the Department of Education dated September 28th. And that gives a couple of main reasons that you could fall into these accountability ratings. And I will say, this system is new. There's quite a learning curve. I don't pretend to be an expert in the new system, and we're all learning it together. So, I think what we'll do, rather than a deep, deep dive, is an overview tonight with any questions that the committee may have. I'm happy to bring back more information and talk more. But two of the main reasons that you can fall into this category are a broad need for support, or these focused or targeted supports. So, for example, you could need support for the entire school, or a specific subgroup and population. And as an example, if I look at Newton School, the reason that they're requiring assistance or intervention is because of a participation rate in the English language learner population at Newton School. So, it can be that a school is making very good progress towards its academic benchmarks, has good participation in the state assessments. But as you can see on this very detailed breakdown, you look at things like English Language Arts, mathematics, science, and you get an achievement total. You look at the growth, which means a year-over-year comparison in those areas, and you get a total. And then, those are weighted at various weights. There's a total for the non-high school schools in our district, and then, there's a total for a high school. And these come out to a percentile that is a ranking on a percentile of 1 to 99, and gives you a general indicator. So, overall, we're in this indicator of partially meeting targets, which means there's movement and progress, but obviously, more work to be done. At the school level, we're digging in and using our data teams to identify what does this mean, not just in the report, but in how do we actually improve outcomes for individual students, which is the most important thing. And what it means for Newton School and the middle school in particular, because they have been designated as needing targeted assistance, is that we will have teams from the Department of Education that have been assigned to those two schools, and they've been in touch with me just in the last four or five days. And they have targeted assistance that comes in and works with the principal to help design a very specific type of plan, called a turnaround plan, that helps to focus in on specific areas that need to improve, and to build on what's working. And in these two schools, they're both ELT schools. So, we're working closely with our ELT agreements and our ELT goals, as well as goals to address the academic concerns that were noted, for example, this low participation in the English Language Group. And that means participation in this exam. So, you have, there can be very specific reasons that a school can be designated. One other thing is that the status of a school is then reflected in the status of the district. So, if you have one or two schools that falls into that, you have that status reflected at the district. We also have the benefit of Matt is very recently from the department. I won't put him on the spot, but if he wants to add any of his insight into this from that end, he, I'm not going to put him on the spot, but he's here if you want to ask him more questions. But again, the system is new. The language is different. It's a different way of looking at it, and the weighted percentiles change the relative importance of some of the things that we may have seen before. I will say, there are some real highlights, and those include some of our participation at the high school level, the growth, the, some of our measures at the high school really reflect both the engagement and the progress towards goals, which is quite positive.
Thank you, Superintendent. Are there any questions from the committee at this time? Member Hollins?
I don't have a question, but I have a comment. On the state website, they show the results... the results for every school, every grade, in the unsummarized way. And it takes each grade at each school, and it says, it takes the students who took the test, and it puts them in categories of advanced, proficient, and then there's two other categories that aren't proficient. And it shows this, I was looking at our math scores, and I was looking at the statewide average. I'm interested in the students who are advanced, because I think in the, it doesn't matter why. And the statewide average for the percent of students statewide, rich districts, poor districts, everybody, number of advanced is, in math, 10% in third grade, 7% in fourth grade, 5% in fifth grade, 7% in sixth grade, 7% seventh grade, 8% in eighth grade. And then I went and I looked at Greenfield, because our students are no different than any other students on average. And our number of advanced doesn't match what the state average is. And I, sometime, we have a policy on supporting students who can advance. So sometime, I would just like us to look at our policy and talk about how we let students advance in math. And I think that would be a great goal for us, is to increase our number of students testing in the advanced category. But the school committee members might find it interesting to see how we compare with the number of advanced students with other districts.
Thank you, Member Hollins. Are there any other questions or comments? Mayor Martin?
Yes. Can you explain the evaluation of, for the high school, of partially meeting targets? That was on that short page, 2 of 2.
So you can see, there's several, there's four different columns. There's all students in the first one, which is non-high school, and then lowest performing non-high school, and then the last two are both high school. So all students in high school and lowest performing in high school. So you can see in the first of that column, the points that Greenfield High School earned, and then the next column, the total possible. So it's sort of a nice little ranking here. So you can see where we earn 2 out of 4, 4 out of 4, 3 out of 4, 4 out of 4. Right? So you can see the breakdown by each of these different indicators, including four-year graduation rate, extended graduation rate, annual dropout rate. And in the annual dropout rate, we're earning 4 out of 4 points. So this is one of the areas that I was speaking about, where we're really showing high engagement with our students, and we're really, the state is recognizing that we are meeting and exceeding in particular areas. So our completion rate total is actually showing strong progress. And then when you get down to the bottom, you see this, you know, around a 66 sort of total of that. But the weight of those high school results only weigh 20% in the calculation of the others. So again, where that weighting comes in. And that kind of comes down to this criterion referenced of partially meeting targets. So again, and I think this, especially looking at the high school results, it reflects what we see in the schools, and it reflects what we're seeing in teams, where they're making progress and where they're continuing to focus. I think in that area in particular, there are some overall summaries that show, yeah, there's been strong progress here and still more work to be done. And I think more than looking at who's advanced and who isn't, which doesn't tell me much about a student based on one test, I think what this tells us is, where as a system can we better support groups of students? For example, the English language learners that we saw at Newton School, that's something that we also saw. You asked earlier about the coordinated program review. That was an area that we knew. We wanted to provide more resources and more support. And so that showed up here. So I think where it is a piece of triangulation of data and supports something that we've seen somewhere else that's helpful to us, and we need to kind of focus. What I've asked both Newton School principal and the middle school principal is to be prepared to come back to this committee as they move through this turnaround process and as they're developing this plan. The individual that was assigned to our district actually came to this committee and was involved with interviews here for the role of curriculum director, is the person that I brought forward maybe two years ago. And they've now been assigned to do this kind of work with our district, now that we're in a place that we're looking for that specific targeted support. So I think that this is going to be a fruitful process for us. And I think you'll find that the principals have a lot to share about the process, how we use data and how we use this to improve our educational experience for all students, certainly students that need to accelerate, but all of our students. And I'd like for them to bring back a more detailed report to you, once they've had some time to work through that process, which the information is just coming from the state now.
The, I, what I'm finding a bit conflicting is that on the district sheet, it notice, it notes that the Greenfield High School is not requiring assistance or intervention. And on the district sheet, it shows, I guess, under Title I, the partially meeting targets. So is that, is that a, is there another subgroup behind the overall school classification? And then, and then not meeting targets is a subgroup of targets to be met?
Hi.
Thank you.
I just want to briefly speak to the target-setting process that the department went through, because I think it is a little bit confusing the way that that's phrased. Essentially, what they're saying is, or what they did, rather, is they looked at, big emphasis on growth in this year's scores, more so than in previous accountability schemes. And what they looked at was the growth rates of the, I think it's the top 25% schools. So the schools that are growing at the fastest rate, those, the top 25 of that group is what they use to set those growth targets. So when it says partially meeting targets, I don't think we need to read that as any kind of necessary shortcoming, but rather, there's a series of targets based on different assessments, different grade levels, different subject areas. And those targets are set based on the growth of the 25% highest growing schools statewide.
Highest of growing schools?
So if you look at the growth rates, like the growth of student scores year-over-year.
Okay.
If you looked at those growth rates statewide, they broke that into quartiles. And so the top quartile that was growing the fastest at the highest rate is what they use to set those targets. And so in other words, they need to encourage all districts to grow at the highest rate.
But I didn't see those, that quartile, quartile tile showing all Eastern Mass schools. There were some in Western Mass. So I'd rather be the best of the best than the best of the worst. So I, how do we, how do we move to a higher level academically?
Keep growing. I mean, I think, I think there's a lot of, there's a lot of really strong progress in there. So, you know, those areas, I mean, that's what the principals will do, is break down those areas. And that's the helpfulness of having a criterion reference test like this, is that you can then make those comparisons and say, you know, this grade, this grade area, this subject area, that's where we need to pour extra energy, extra resources, extra support.
So when we had MCAS 1 early on, there were a lot of complaints about teaching to the MCAS frameworks and so on. So have we, are we developing that particular perception now after this first review? Or are we to expect that we can't have a curriculum because it won't teach to the MCAS 2?
I, I don't know if that, if that's necessarily a black and white or an either-or question. I mean, I think what we see is that there is a new assessment, right? There's an MCAS 2.0, and there's a legacy MCAS assessment. So some of our schools, the high school is still taking the legacy assessment. Other schools took the new MCAS 2.0. But in either case, you know, the goal of the assessment is to move away from teaching, that concept of teaching towards the test, and move towards teaching towards the curriculum frameworks, you know, the state standards. And those are being updated quite rapidly. There's been several, several new sets of curriculum frameworks. And so I think this just reinforces the importance of becoming familiar with those and making sure our curriculum is aligned to those, which, you know, that will be, that will be an issue for this committee at some point, is to, is the curriculum.
What is, what's the testing schedule? Is this every?
It's annual.
Annual, once a year. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments at this time? I'll just close this topic with saying that I find the new ranking system to be, it feels like the same thing, just with a different wrapper. And it's more difficult for a common person to actually access the information that they may be looking for. And I feel that there's still a real emphasis on, you know, the MCAS scores, and of course, student growth, which we can all appreciate. But in looking at these accountability reports, I am frustrated, because I think that it doesn't take a comprehensive look at any school district. And it doesn't take into account other factors, or in theory, it supposedly does, but it's not taking into account all factors related to student achievement. And I know that for, for me, I care more that we are assessing our students in a way that is benefiting the teachers that are in the classroom, so that they can access that information and address the needs of each individual student as quickly as possible. And one of my frustrations with the MCAS test is that, you know, we don't get the data in a timely fashion, and it's been a problem for a long time. And I personally would like to see emphasis placed on some other assessments and looking at our district as a whole. And thank you for bringing the information, and I look forward to continuing to highlight it. And I like the idea of definitely having the principals come in and report out on the turnaround plans and continue to focus our conversation on the curriculum frameworks, et cetera. Okay, so our fourth agenda item, the draft superintendent goals. You'll notice that there aren't any in your packets. And this kind of corresponds with item number seven. Got a bit confused, which is, the MASCE has offered to come and support the committee through a two-hour meeting. Glenn Kuchar has offered to lead a two-hour meeting to help us to come to clear superintendent goals. And I asked him specifically, Glenn, do you feel that you can guide us in two hours to this result? And he said very confidently, yes. So what I'm asking of the committee is, do we want to take advantage of that help? We've had some trouble, I believe, at the subcommittee level. And we've had some other delays. And I think it may be helpful to have that leadership in this regard. There is a need to settle on some goals for this year. What do we want our superintendent to be focusing on this year? So I would entertain a motion to schedule a full committee meeting with Glenn Kuchar from the MASCE leading the discussion with the objective of coming to a conclusion on FY19 superintendent goals.
So moved.
Is there a second? Second by Mayor Martin. Any discussion? Cam says no. Yes, Member Ekstrom?
Sorry, guys. So does that mean it's a working session, or that it would be a full committee meeting in all, with all of its grandeur?
With the cameras and everything. I imagine it to be more productive as a working session with the goal of coming to a final outcome, that we can vote in the moment, but also, if we feel like we want to be really formal about it, we can bring it back up at the next meeting. But it wouldn't be like our regular November meeting. This would be a meeting in between our regularly scheduled meetings. Member Hollins?
I, I want to understand why I'm in agreement. I want to understand why we just can't talk about district goals. I went online and I, I looked at what the top 10 districts do for goals. Some of them actually say goal. They're going to increase student achievement by 5%. And then there's a column that says, here's what the superintendent's going to do, and here's how the school committee's going to support it. And we just, it's not just like, these superintendent goals, and we got to sit and talk about our goals, what are district goals. Why can't we just come up with some broad goals that we want for the district, and let the superintendent figure out how she'll support them administratively, and then we figure out how we're going to support them through governance? Anyway, it just seems like we never can get our own goals and district goals. Maybe we should just come up with broad goals. That's all.
Are you offering an amendment, or are you just?
I would love to see us just do district goals, and then let the superintendent figure out how that can, some districts do it that way. Do I want to offer an amendment? I'd like to offer an amendment that we have Glenn Kuchar talk to us about broad district goals, and then how we have both superintendent and school committees support those broad goals.
Cam, would you like to accept the amendment? Could you, and are you with the intent of also securing superintendent goals? So to include discussion on district goals?
That'll never happen in two hours.
I was just going to follow up with that, which is...
That's my goal.
Your goal is two hours. So I'm hearing you not accepting the amendment. Okay, thank you. So the amendment was not accepted. Is there any further discussion at this time? Okay. Yeah, yes, Mayor Martin?
Have we a date that goes with this?
We don't yet have a date, but I will immediately get on that to get us a date.
And then when Glenn Kuchar's here, I imagine we could ask him any question anyways.
I would, I would, I'd say so. He might have some boundaries that he wants to set, but, okay. So there's a motion on the table. Yes, Katie?
I'm totally in support of this motion. I just have a concern, and I really want us all to be committed to coming to this meeting. Unfortunately, I had a family emergency last month, and so we had to cancel a meeting because I couldn't come, because we were already that close to quorum. And I felt really awful that I couldn't come, but there was nothing I could do. And I don't think it's, I think we need to be aware of how many of us are consistently missing meetings that make it impossible for the rest of us to be able to step back on a family emergency. That's all.
Thank you, Member Karen. Okay, any further discussion? Okay. Are we clear on the motion? Great. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And I believe that was unanimous. Okay. Seeing no noes, no abstentions. Great. Thank you for that. Next up is the annual enrollment report. There's quite a bit here. Thank you, Superintendent. This was another item that was on our school committee calendar to have annual enrollment information.
All right. So you have four documents. The first is our total enrollment as of October 1st. This number has been fluid. It has been higher than this in the last month or two. It has, it goes up and down, it peaks and valleys. And what's not reflected here is the number of kids that we process, that come in, that move to the district. But there is some movement in and out, families moving in and out of Greenfield. And so that does affect these numbers. But this is a true count as of October 1st. And there was discussion earlier about projections. Projections are just that. They're projections. And we did have a big influx. It changes. So these are our actual numbers. We do our best to project, and then we bring you actual data as we have it. So that information is the first in your enrollment report, which is actual enrollment. The next is the school attending children report. This is pulled from the Department of Education website. And one of the things you'll notice as you look at various reports is that the dates matter a lot. So this report is as of January 1st. And this breaks down into a number of very interesting categories. The first is your local public schools. And then you go through regional voc tech, collaboratives, charter, out-of-district, homeschooled, in-state, for example, any parochial students, and then out-of-state, which is almost always zero. So this breaks down students that Greenfield has under its umbrella, but in a number of different categories. And it's an interesting way to take a look at that with the totals being across the bottom there. So our total number of students that's included in this report comes out to just over 2,000, 2,167. Of course, not all of those students are actually in our schools, as you've just seen from this report.
Could you clarify, which is Franklin County Technical School?
Vocational technical regional schools, grades nine through 12.
I think we have two students at Smith, don't we?
Yes, this is a summary. Anybody going to voc school in this, in the school attending children report, it's any in that type.
Right.
The majority of those are Franklin County Tech.
Thank you. Thank you.
The next...
Mayor Martin.
Yes, the...
Oh, was there more? I'm sorry.
The total under local public schools equals 1,490.
Yes.
Does that mean Greenfield Public Schools?
Right, so there are, the number that you get to in the total enrollment includes local public, out-of-district, nope, out-of-district tuition students. I'm forgetting all the categories, but they add up to total our, total enrollment. So for example, on our out-of-district sheet, you see at the bottom our, sorry, on our total enrollment report, at the bottom you see our out-of-district is included there. So it's a little bit of combining and recombining. These numbers do all add, but you'll see that the totals are different on each, on each page.
Right, so if you added that 31, the 30 out-of-district?
So I believe, Steve might be able to back me on this one. This is one I usually spend time with our state reporting person, I say, "These numbers," and she goes through with me. But I believe this is local public plus homeschool plus parochial plus out-of-district equals. Steve might want to comment on that. It's a good question.
All right, so where I was trying to go was that, I'm trying to find the total number of student-age children in Greenfield.
About 2,200.
2,200, or 2,167.
Right, right, that's correct.
Okay, so that would be the total, then...
Because they don't count out-of-state private schools.
Right, so they don't count that, so we don't have to deal with that number because they don't count it. So if we go from 1,490 to 2,167, I have a, I have a problem comprehending that jump from 1,490 to 2,167.
We all do. It's how the department counts them, though.
Okay. That's a lot of students that we're not satisfying.
Right, but you can see, so you can go across the bottom. If you take 1,490 public schools, plus 104 voc tech, plus 25 collaborative, plus 111 charter, plus 331 out-of-district public, plus 58 homeschooled, plus 48 parochial, plus nobody in the out-of-state, you get 2,167.
Right, thank you for reading that for me.
You're welcome.
So my point again is that we have a total enrollment for the Greenfield that we reported on October 1st of 1,771, and we have 1,490 local public schools. So now we're a couple hundred.
This is in January.
In January.
In January, we had 1,490, but our report October 1st of 2018...
I can pull Januaries.
Was in excess of 1,700.
It was, yeah. I can pull Januaries of this section report if you want, because again, I'm showing you four different types of reports. I wasn't sure which enrollment reports you were looking for, so I gave you all of them.
October 1st and January 1st is one quarter.
Doesn't include...
January of last year.
It's January of last year to now.
Okay, October 1st of last year. If we take that number and then go to January 1st of last year, or beginning of this year, you will find that same change, or that same discrepancy in number of students.
Let me ask my registrar and enrollment specialist, because again, it's just how the state is, it's a question of how the state is counting it, and I'd be happy to give you that answer.
But we can use their other numbers, because we also report the January 1st number, and then we report again April 1st. So we're talking a different quarter. So does our April 1st number of 2018 equal our January 1st number of 2018?
No.
No, so we're still 200 or 300 students off.
No, no, no. It's just apples to oranges. So I'd be happy to, for example, pull last year's October 1 report for comparison of this, or pull the year before's January 1 report of this. You just have to look apples to apples if you want to look over time. If that's what you're looking for, we'll get you the same report at two different points in time.
Okay, I just, I just want to compare students to students. No apples, no oranges. The 1,490 students by this report as of January 1st, 2018. As of April 1st, 2018, did we have 250 students join our school? So we have, we have a higher number by 250 students.
From January of last year to just now, we have 250 more students.
This doesn't take into account choice in...
But we reported on April 1st.
Mayor, they're just different ways of counting. Rather than confuse everybody, the agenda item only said enrollment report, so let me get you two points in time of the same different report and send that information out to the full committee.
This is just resident Greenfield students.
Okay, and my last point, in dealing with the enrollment. So if we had a January 1st number of 1,490, and we had an April 1st number of 250 more, and we had October 1st of 2018 of 2,600 students, and we knew that there were, I'm sorry, 1,700 students last year, October 1st, and we know there's only 2,167 students in town, why do we project 1,875 students for the Greenfield Public School System?
Mayor, it's, it's...
Because people can choice in, because people can decide not to go to the collaborative anymore, because they can decide, because we've grown every year.
But I think that...
This doesn't count choice in students at all.
I was asked for an enrollment report, I'm bringing it. I'd like to get the answer to your question and provide it to you. I think in short, this number, 1,490, is not a reflection of children in our schools. It's how the, what I'm trying to explain is, it's how the state defines local public schools. It's not actual children in our actual building, which is why we create and maintain in-house and provide to you a section report, which tells you how many children are in every classroom in our district, so you know what is actually happening, which is more useful than an obscure data report to somebody in the department. But I'm providing both, and I'll provide both for those two dates.
Okay, but I need to belabor this point, because the, this is what we submitted to the state? Is this a submission by the Greenfield District?
We certify the data, but how they code the children is according to their reporting categories.
But the title says, "School Attending Children As Of January 1st." School Attending Children.
Sure, it's the School Attending Children Report, it's our, yes.
All right, so we can maybe have this on the agenda for another discussion.
And in the future, if there are agenda requests that are on the calendar, I'm just guessing at what the committee would like to see. If there's a specific request, I'm happy to provide more clarity around a particular type. Again, I just provided information that was, seemed the most logical. Next, I'd like to take you through the charter, I lost a page, the charter information and choice. And this is where it's very, oh, no. Next, I'd like to take you to the choice-in data. It's a one-page, and this is actual children that choice into the Greenfield Public Schools in kindergarten through 12th grade. And as of October 1st, it's this page. It says, "Choice-in Data" at the top, October 1st, 2018. At the top, this breaks down every child, K to 12, who is choicing into Greenfield Public Schools, which was probably around 70 several years ago, and is now at 99. So we are seeing a high number of students choice into Greenfield and stay in Greenfield. Some of these students do graduate, of course, and then move on. That's a good thing. So our numbers change. And the key thing about choice is that this number is set by the committee. So when we keep talking about school choice and the amount of money we receive for school choice and available seats for school choice, that is all under the control of the committee. Every year, we come to you and say, "We'd like to post this many choices, this many seats." The committee has the authority to opt out of that school choice program and receive no dollars in choice, or to accept a certain number of seats. And in the past, the committee has put some limits on how many students we are allowed to accept. So we always have demand that exceeds the number of available seats as approved by the school committee. If we were to advertise more seats, we would get more choice in students every year. We have a number of families, and we have to have a lottery by law, because we have more people that want to come to Greenfield than we have seats that have been approved by the school committee for. So April or May, again, of this year, we'll have an opportunity to vote those seats again, and that will be a discussion we can have at that point in time. But that's an important number to keep an eye on, because not only do these students bring talent to our school district, our athletic teams and so forth, but they do bring those choice dollars with them as well. And it's an important way for us to, I think it's been a positive program for us.
Thank you, Superintendent. I'm seeing Member Hollins.
Are we allowed to amend our choice guideline? Like, if we find that we have seats at any time?
We have deadlines for the state, and there are lotteries and deadlines that we have to adhere to, so it would be pretty cumbersome to amend that. For example, we tell the Department of Education how many choice seats we have, we post it in the newspaper, then we send families away who exceed that number of seats. So if you were to change it later, I think that would create some problems.
Do you have people right now asking to come in?
I haven't looked at that number in the, since school started, because typically we do another, our last round of our lottery. And I think at this point, we've told all families that we are sorry that we don't have available seats for them if they applied earlier.
I have a couple of other quick questions.
I do want to take you through the last page of this report. There's one other page. Is it on the former piece?
Katie has an ask.
I just have, is this, doesn't count in district choice, correct? So it doesn't tell us which kids are moving?
Correct, there's no, nope, there's no accounting in these reports for intra-district choice. A student is in the Four Corners area but wants to go to the ELT program at Newton. Nope.
Great, thank you.
Would you like to hold your questions?
Sure.
Okay.
Okay, the next report is the charter. And I think this is a really, really useful, and I did ask Steve to pull some data on this, and he went back over a couple of years, which is really helpful for our purposes. So this has both students and cost. And you didn't ask for this, but I think it's worth spending a few moments on. So this is charter sending, children that attend charter schools and how much it costs us. So you can see in the top line that in FY19, there were 91 students attending charter schools for Rivers Pioneer Valley Performing Arts and the Chinese Immersion Charter School. These things are very important as the charter schools around us continue to expand or submit applications to expand, and this is something that the committee may well want to take a closer look at. So we spend $1.3 million on students attending charter schools. But if you look at that middle column, the FTE, number of kids in charter schools, and you look back over the last four years, it's almost exactly the same number. So we don't see a big change in this, and that's generally because once a child goes to, makes a choice to go to a different school, that's the school that they're going to. What we're not seeing is an increase in charter schools, children leaving Greenfield and going to charter schools. The fact that it's holding steady and has shown declines in several years shows that people are maybe looking at that choice and deciding to say, and take advantage of our arts program, our strong theater programs, our music programs that are available here, our world language programs. So that staying steady is a good thing. But the dollar value you'll see has climbed in those four years from 960,000 to 1.3 million. And that's because the rate per pupil that we are charged has gone up. In the last year alone, we spend more than $1,000 more per student for each child that attends a charter school. In FY18, a Four Rivers Charter School student cost Greenfield $14,310. In FY19, we expect that's going to be $15,230. Some of these went up 1,500. Chinese Immersion went up from 11,000 to over 13,000 per pupil. So that assessment, which has nothing to do with what the school committee sets or what the superintendent spends, has to do with the formula that the state assesses us, has changed significantly, and so that number has climbed, even though the actual number of students, we're retaining our students here, and we're not, we're not seeing, unlike other communities, which are seeing an increase in number of students choosing charter schools. I think that's a positive. On the next slide, you have choice. I'm happy to take questions about that, if you want.
Thank you.
Member Hollins has been waiting also, so...
So just related to the Chinese Immersion School, I'd like to recommend to the chair that we would support an opposition letter. I think we've received an invitation to do so regarding the expansion of the Chinese Immersion School.
I'm hearing a motion there.
I move to have the committee vote to send a letter of opposition to the expansion of the Chinese Immersion School.
Is there a second?
Second.
Katie, second by Katie, Karen. Great, thank you, Mayor Martin.
And follow-up, on the cost, so I imagine this FTE means student. All right, so the, the cost per student is derived from the, is based on the sending districts per student cost. So the web we've developed is that as we increase our budget and our cost per student goes up, every choice out student then is calculated as, that's what it costs your district to teach the student at home, and now this is the cost, the same cost, will be taken from your budget and sent to the next choice district. Am I correct in thinking it that way?
Steve can speak more towards how the formula is calculated. I know that is a part of it, but I will say that costs go up each year, so that, you know, is a continued increase as both inflation, but also the other associated costs.
The little intricacies and all the various formulas that the state uses, and how we interact with it as a local district increasing school costs, is how we also get involved in, from the, from a distance, saying that, geez, our, our choice charter went from 960 to the 1.3, 1.3 million.
But it's also, Mayor, why we use our school choice funds to build high-quality programs that people care about, and why we continue to use and spend from that fund to develop programs that people stay in Greenfield and care about, and tell other people, "I am proud to send my kids to Greenfield Public Schools because of the programs that we offer." And if we didn't, we'd be spending more than double this.
You proved my point exactly, the flaw in the formula and the flaw in the rewarding choice-out districts with the cost of improving districts that are sending the students. So districts that are trying to improve and maintain a high quality, it costs them more money, but when a student leaves, that high cost per student then is moved to the maybe not-so-good of a school. It's very complicated, I understand.
Yeah, you're exactly right. Yeah, you're right. It's based upon the average cost, per pupil cost of the sending district, as well as a few other things that are thrown in there for special ed increase, as well as a facilities building-type increase. And, yeah, they have a strong lobby, and the per pupil amounts are high, and it is a circular system when it comes down to it.
Thank you.
I just want to also say that in my understanding is that there was a graduated plan, so it started with the reimbursements being lower, I'm sorry, the payments being lower, were actually may have been in the form of reimbursements to the district, and that has essentially evolved into where we are now.
Yeah.
So there is a motion on the table, Mayor Martin. Do you want to speak to your motion briefly?
Sure. So the Chinese Immersion School had requested from DESI, in the Board of Education, to increase the number of classes and grades in their school. That was rejected by the Board of Education last fall. However, there's been a change of, change of leadership at DESI as well as with the school, and they reapplied and have petitioned to expand to their same intent from last fall. At that time, Superintendent Harper suggested that we, as a school committee, join others in opposition to the expansion, because it was impacting our, our budget, as most charter schools do. So with this new expansion proposal by the Chinese Immersion School with the state, it's requested that a number of school committees gather together and oppose the expansion of the, particularly in Western Mass, the Chinese Immersion School.
And so the motion is to have the committee compose an opposition letter to this expansion. Is there any further discussion? Yes, Superintendent?
Just to further support that, I also wanted to note that we requested enrollment reports from the charter schools as well to provide to you this evening, but we do not typically receive them, even when requested. So that would be an additional piece of information that we could provide, but it can be challenging to get reciprocal information, not in all cases, not all the time, but it can be, and that lends itself to the motion that you're making.
Member Hollins.
I support the motion, but I think we should have a reason. And the, the reason I think we should have a reason, it should not be that it takes money from our school, because the new commissioner is an expert on choice, that's his background. And the idea of choice is that the money doesn't belong to the district, it's really for the family, and they can take their money and go where they want. So I think if we want to have a reason for the new commissioner to support, I think the reason is that rural communities can't support their public school system. You lose the mass of children you need to have adequate-sized classes, and charter schools weren't designed for rural... weren't designed for rural regions. But I don't think losing money is a winning argument because it hasn't won anywhere in the country. But I think being rural and not having enough population to support the public schools if it keeps getting divided is a good reason.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor Martin?
I do apologize for my shallow understanding of the opposition letter. I would propose that the Dr. Susan Hollins comprise the letter with the superintendent for the chair's review.
I find that really humorous, but I would support, I mean, I support that, I think that the superintendent could potentially draft a letter to begin with and, you know, hearing Member Hollins' input, I agree that there are many ways that we could craft our argument.
Money will lose every time, though, because...
So I just wanted to take it back a couple steps. So the, the motion that's on the table is actually just about whether or not we're going to actually draft this letter. So let's go ahead and vote on that now. I think we're ready to do that. So all those in favor? Yes?
Clarifying the motion, we are sending this, are we sending it to the DESI?
Yeah, to the...
To the Department of Education.
Commissioner?
Yes.
If I might insert a thing?
Yes, you may. Thank you.
Great. And that's fine with you, right? You're seconded. Okay. Okay, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any noes? I think everyone said yes, so that motion carries. And then there was also a suggestion from Mayor Martin that Member Hollins and Superintendent Harper draft a letter.
Well, I trust the superintendent to draft it, but I think we should give a reason other than, I don't mind helping, but other than we don't have the money.
I thought Member Hollins had a great idea, and I think she had a great start to a letter.
I'm going to go ahead and agree with Superintendent on that one.
Oh, my goodness. Okay, so what I'm hearing is a little bit of an interest and consensus and support for Member Hollins to draft up a first draft letter and give it to the superintendent to tweak. Well, I will also take a look at the sort of timeframe that we're working with. I'm not sure that the timeframe really allows for it to come back to the committee, but it might. It doesn't. She's shaking her head. Okay. So everybody's just set on the possibility that it may not come back to us, but we appreciate Member Hollins' position.
They don't touch an A, don't forget about it.
Great, great. I'm seeing thumbs up. Cam doesn't care. So we are moving, oh, yes, yes, Mayor Martin. Yes, Mayor Martin?
Yes, back to the choice in data. So I believe outside of the year that the high school opened, we always had choice in data, and we had voted to provide for seats, for students to choice in. And we always make that recommendation after we receive the number of empty beds suggested by the, beds, number of empty seats.
You got beds?
Going to get off the ward. The number of empty seats in classrooms in the various schools. And so it's the recommendation that the committee votes on. So if the superintendent wants to accelerate that or develop another routine where the minimum and maximum number of seats per school and class, then the, the committee could review that specific detailed information and make those choice in seats available.
Wait. Are you, I'm sorry.
Okay, so we have...
You were suggesting that you would like to have the superintendent bring a revised recommendation as to choice in seats for this year? Is that accurate?
No, close. So we always receive from the superintendent a recommendation from the available seats.
Yes.
All the available seats are designated by school and class.
Yes.
So if there is a need to increase the number of seats, then, I mean, increase the number of choice in opportunities, then have the teachers go to the max in each of those school sites, and then we would have a different number to agree to and promote.
That'll be down the road.
Right. It'll be in May.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor Martin. No, Susan, actually not.
Talking about awaiting this.
Is there any further discussion on the enrollment reports that we've received today? Of Member Hollins?
On the charter schools, it shows on this forum, the one that's downloaded from DESI, it shows a, you know, certain number of children at the grades K-1, 2, 3, 4, 5. What charter schools serve that grade? Is it only the Chinese immersion? I thought most of the charter schools were high school. Four Rivers does elementary?
They do?
Oh, I thought they didn't.
I didn't think so.
We have another report on charter schools, which ones our children go to and not grades. Very curious. So I'd just like to make the comment that at every grade level K to 8, we have about 40 students. I think the listing under collaborative is only special ed students we place. I don't know that those are choice schools, but we have about 40 students at every grade. So we can assume, we, we have 150 parents K to 5 and 100 parents in middle school that want something different than what we have. We have an empty school. And does anyone think it would be interesting to know what is it that parents want? Because we have 250 students K to 8, K to 7, choosing something else. It's just, it's been a long time since we've asked parents, what, what is it that you want? I think.
Superintendent Harper?
I, I'm not clear if this is a request for the school committee to ask the parents or if this is a question about whether administration, I'm confused by the term "we" here, so I'm not sure how to respond.
I think deep in there is an interest in knowing more about families that are choicing out either to charter schools, and I, it's very different to send a child to a charter school than it is to choice out in terms of the finances, so. But I, there's an interest in knowing more about what's going on with decision-making with families who are sending kids to schools outside of the Greenfield Public Schools. And I have an interest in that, too. I actually saw, when I was looking at the Frontier data, I, it, it kind of was surprising to me, I think because I, in my own mind, sometimes leave it out. And it's a significant number of students that are going to Frontier. So I think that this could be a need for further discussion, or perhaps we could confer with the superintendent in terms of how much time it may take to have some kind of survey or something like that. I know that our registrar already does collect some data. I'm reluctant to move a recommendation at this time because I don't feel like I have enough information about the amount of time it would take for our superintendent to do the research on this right now, so I would want to have a little bit of a better understanding of that before asking her to take that on. Otherwise, it could be, inform some of the goals that we create. It could be a larger thing. So, yeah. That's my thought on that.
I agree.
Okay. Any further comments or discussion on annual reports, annual enrollment? Super. So we have a couple of very quick things that we have. It's almost 10:00 PM and it's, we're about 45 minutes behind schedule that I had thought for this evening. We do have a handful of executive session items that we need to address. So if everyone could just, pardon? Just focus quickly on these items. I think we can get through them in the next, by 10:10. That's my goal. So if we can all try to do that, let's try to do that. So the next item is referrals to subcommittee. We've never had this, like, really officially on, on an agenda, but I wanted to do so today. It came to my attention that there is an Attorney General's draft template for the, an MOU between a school district and a police department in regards to school resource officers. So what you have in your packet is a copy of our current school resource officer MOU and a copy of the template that the Attorney General's Office has just recently developed. Now, in our extended conversation about school resource officers earlier in the year, there was a considerable amount of interest from the school committee to review the school resource officer MOU, and this, I believe, is an opportunity for us and a great time, given the new template, to actually do that, and I would like to refer this to the Health and Safety Subcommittee unless there's some kind of opposition. I'm seeing everyone kind of being okay with that. Cam loves it. Great. So that's happening.
Needs your motion?
I don't think so.
Okay.
I'm ordering you.
Done.
Where's my gavel?
I just want to make sure we're lined up.
Super. And so also, I have the school attorney policy. This has come up, and this is something that I have requested from Member Alexander, who's the Chair of Policy, to review. We've kind of gotten behind in policy work, and I think it's important for the policy Subcommittee to take a look at this attorney policy. So I'm presenting it now officially to move to the Subcommittee for Review. Because I want to set up the next round of officers and leadership on the school committee for success. And what I've run into as the chairperson is that this school attorney policy is unusually restrictive, and it doesn't serve the committee, it doesn't serve the interests of the committee, and I think that we can do better. I think that it would just take some small tweaks, and we need to look at it. So whoever may be Chair in January will likely appreciate it. So, thumbs up? Thumbs up. Bill loves it. Susan's nodding. Great. So that's happening. We're doing good. We've got nine minutes left. Follow-up on the MASC workshop. So this is an official follow-up. This is about the meeting that got canceled. I touched on it in my chairperson report. The purpose of that meeting was for us to get together as a group, review our self-evaluation results, and touch on some other things that were going on with the committee, and have an opportunity to really just look at how we're doing our work together. So the question that's on the table right now is, do we want to reschedule this meeting? There was mixed interest in, I mean, we voted it. I'm not sure everyone was in attendance at that particular meeting, but at this time, I just want to know if we want to actually follow through with that. And if we do, I would also say that it won't likely happen until the end of November. I know that many of the MASC officials are quite busy with their annual conference, et cetera. Member Hollins?
Well, we're scheduling to meet with Glenn Kuchar about goals for the superintendent. I, I think that's maybe an opportunity to look at broad goals and, I don't know.
Thank you, Member Hollins. I'm going to kind of interpret that a little bit. What I'm, I saw you shaking your head, and I'm seeing sort of six mixed signals from people, and I think that that's totally fair. I think that what we might want to do is have our workshop for our goals, see how we feel after that, and then if we want to have some other kind of workshop with one another to address other issues, maybe that's a good solution moving forward. I want to be mindful of the fact that it is difficult for us to attend special meetings, and we have a lot of kind of competing priorities in our personal lives outside of the school committee also, so. How about we wait? We revisit this after our goal-setting meeting? See if we feel like we need another workshop together. You're saying yes. You're saying yes, but Ian's saying yes. Everyone?
Yes. Yes.
Bill doesn't care. Great. So that was a casual vote, but that was a yes, we're going to wait and see how we feel after a goal-setting meeting. So the next item, the very last item, is the MASC/MASS joint conference. This is an annual conference that's put on by the MASC and the MASS, and it is coming up. It is November 7th through 10th. However, there is an option for people to attend only on Friday and Saturday. Generally, Friday is a full day and Saturday is a half day. And so I am presenting this to you to see who, if anyone, is interested in attending this. Generally, we do send a couple of representatives from our school committee and fund that through the school budget. So just by like a show of hands, can we see if there's anyone interested in attending this?
I've been thinking about whether I can fit it in my schedule.
Okay, so, so half interest. Are you all, pardon?
I'm interested, but I need to look at my schedule as well.
Okay.
This is important, but... Yeah, I have interest, but I've been working on a project for that Friday night, so I could go Wednesday, Thursday, but come home Friday.
Okay. So Superintendent, do you have an idea of any budgetary restrictions that we have related to sending members? In the past, I think we sent, the most members that we sent were like three, I think we reimbursed last year. I could be wrong.
My recollection is, typical number is two. And that includes lodging. And I think it's well worth it.
Okay. So I'm seeing that three members are interested and that there's a need to look at their schedules. There is not a way to bring this back up for a vote. I think that, with that being said, how about everybody looks at their schedules and we see what we can do? There's also nothing that is stopping anyone to pay out of their own pocket. I know at least one member who did that before. I obviously think it's great for us to get reimbursed, but I just want to let, put it out there that, that folks are able to do that. So I will put out an email in the next few days just to kind of follow up on this, to get this rolling. Any comments or discussion on it? Yes, Member Hollins?
Could I go back to just the MASC goals? Sometimes the chairperson could just assign a couple people to work on something like a special task force. Would you consider, instead of calling in the MASC and thinking about another special meeting, maybe making a task force of two people like you and me? Because I've reviewed every year everything we've done in categories as a school committee, and you've got the review of how we did, our perception, and just going over it and presenting something.
Thank you. That was, it's an agenda item that's already been settled, but quickly I'll say no because this is a full committee decision. What I don't want to do is come to the full committee that, with, with something that two members agree with and then have the half to the same conversation over again. As well, right now, currently, we have a Subcommittee that's been assigned to it, and it's struggled with that. So thank you for your input. Any conversation, any more conversation about the conference? Okay. Great. So we will do the best we can in order to see, see that whoever wants to go can go. And thank you, everyone. Oh, yeah, declassifying executive session minutes. I just wanted to let you all know that I did follow up with the Attorney General on this. There are no strict guidelines in terms of the amount of time or in what intervals we should be declassifying executive session minutes. There was a recommendation to either do so quarterly or in sort of semesters. So I will be taking a look at executive session minutes and bring them back up again for us. I just wanted to kind of put everyone at ease. I believe at the last meeting, I stated that every six months we needed to, and that is incorrect. That's not accurate. I also do not want us to get behind on that, so it is certainly something that's on my mind.
You're going to vote this?
Yes.
Yes.
And then, is there any new business? We dealt with some earlier in the meeting.
Right.
Okay. Great. And any new agenda items? Super. So at this time after, we will enter, I would entertain a motion to enter into executive session for the purposes of MGLC 30A 21, Item 3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, and the Chair so declares. This is in regards to Unit A, Unit C, and cafeteria workers, as well as a general litigation conversation. Super. I can be the one who moved it. It's fine.
So nobody moved it yet, Mr. Martin?
I moved it. Or Bill.
Captain Jack. All right, we have to take a roll call?
Yes. Roll call, please.
Roll call. Bill Martin. Susan Exter. Adrian Union.
Yes.
Susan Hollins. Cameron Ward. Susan Hollins. Cameron Ward.
No.
Katie Karen.
You would like to?
What?
Would like to not? It's all right.
I'm not going in to take a session.
Okay. Member Hollins?
Yes, everybody else said yes.
Okay, great. So GCTV, we will not come back to public session for any votes. We will come to public session just to adjourn. So we are now currently in executive session.
All of our productions at GCTV are sponsored in part by Bay State Health, providing the care you and your family need, when you need it, close to home. Visit them online at baystatehealth.org. Greenfield Savings Bank, visit them at 400 Main Street in Greenfield. Call them at 774-3191, or go online to greenfieldsavings.com. Greenfield Community College, providing access and excellence in higher education in the Pioneer Valley. Visit them at gcc.mass.edu. The Hammond Family, The Hammond Family are longtime supporters of Greenfield Community New Fortune Chinese Restaurant on the Mohawk Trail in Greenfield. Visit them online at newfortunema.com. Call them at 772-0838 and check them out on Facebook. Real Cleaning Services, cleaning Hampshire and Franklin County since 1972. We don't cut corners, we clean them. Check them out online at realclean.com. Call them at 413-422-1143. Peoples United Bank, located at 45 Federal Street in Greenfield. You can call them at 774-3713, or visit them online at peoples.com. The Solar Store of Greenfield, replacing fossil fuels and nuclear power, one home at a time. Visit them at 23 Fisk Ave. Call them at 413-772-3122, or visit them online at solarstoreofgreenfield.com. Thank you to our sponsors for supporting all of GCTV's productions.